Okay, council, are we ready?
Looks like you're ready.
Okay, a regular meeting of the city planning board will be held on Wednesday, August 5th, 2020 at 6:30 PM via Zoom, at which time the board shall consider the following. For the public, with the planning board meetings and with all the land use board meetings, I believe that the meeting ID is consistent, which is 898-4047-0735. The password is 072289. And the dial-in is 646-876-9923. Okay, I would like to, since we do have a quorum present, do the roll call. And anybody just kind of state your name and we'll move forward.
Charles White.
All right, I heard Charles White and Commissioner Leslie Zamor.
Frank Troleo. Frank Troleo.
Okay, got Frank Troleo. Helene, would you want to unmute yourself?
Sorry about that, Helene Dango.
Thank you. And Commissioner Gleason Bancardo said that she will be a little bit late, but we do have a quorum and the Chair, Daryl Selsey, is present. Uh, let's see, first thing is, uh, we did the roll call, the approval of the minutes, council. I believe that we don't have minutes ready, so we're going to table those. You have to unmute yourself.
That, that is correct, Mr. Chairman. And also, if there are plans to have minutes prepared from this point forward, plans are in the works for that.
Okay, all right, thank you, council. Um, I make a motion that we table the minutes until we have minutes. Have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Item number three, administrative action. All administrative actions are type two, thereby ending the secret process. 3.1, the lead agency notice, city council recommendation. In accordance with Article 11, Section 3 of the zoning code, if any amendment is to be considered by the city council, it shall be referred for review and report to the planning board, the corporation council, and any other board, agency, or official of the city which the city council deems appropriate. Just for housekeeping, this is a recommendation that is going to the city council. So the public will not, uh, have input here. If this is something that moves forward from the city council and it comes back to us for site plan and review, then the public will absolutely be able to ask as many questions or that they have in regards to this application, um, as well as the applicant will be able to present. One Bradford Road, Section 165.66, Block 2204, Lot 1 and 4. The applicant for One Bradford Road seeks to establish an office building with various associated uses. To do so, the applicant is requesting that the city council rezone the property from RMF 10 zoning district to LI 7.5 zoning district. As a result of the rezoning, the applicant will need a variance. The applicant will need site plan approval and certificate of appropriateness approval. Secret determination, this unlisted action is coordinated review. The city council has declared itself, has declared its intent to serve as lead agency in accordance with secret. Okay. So, uh, council, at the work session, uh, we had gone over some language that was being added. Do you have that current language?
That is correct. And I did forward, it's about a, an hour ago to all board members, if you have access to your email. But there were two terms. I guess by way of overview, um, the applicant was proposing a zone change from the RMF 15 to the LI 7.5 zone. And in keeping with the park-like setting, the land use boards have taken a look at a PUCD park ordinance. And the purpose of this ordinance is to promote the use of the site as an office park with company headquarters incorporating appropriate design standards and uses that are compatible with a park-like setting. He has reviewed the entire ordinance and has made comments from an architectural and design standpoint. And the planning board has reviewed the entire ordinance with the focus on the use, permitted uses. At this time, I'll just mention a few salient points. The planning board feels that at this time, a zone change from RMF 15 to the LI 7.5 zone is not recommended as it is not in keeping with the park-like settings. The site is surrounded on three sides by a park and the fourth side is buffered by the MTA rail tracks. So this PUCD park zoning text amendment is being offered to the city council as more appropriate. Regarding use, I will simply say that the current allows by special permit, the parking of commercial vehicles provided they are buffered, screened, and located as far as possible from the public streets and right-of-way, not visible from public view, and located on the periphery of the site or behind the buildings. The outdoor storage of materials, equipments, pallets, supplies, or other industrial items of any kind shall be subject to plan approval. And no parking of commercial vehicles shall be permitted within any setback or buffer. Short, the, the land use boards appear to that the PUCD park zoning designation would be a more appropriate zoning district than the LI 7.5 designation. And that will, along with the entire text amendment, will be forwarded to the city council for review.
Okay, thank, thank you, council. Okay. So at, at this point in time.
I'm, I'm sorry. I might just add, at the last meeting, there were two terms that the board sought definitions for as, as permitted uses. The two terms were educational institution and cultural center. Education, educational institution is defined as a school, including a technical, trade, or vocational school that is operated or directly supported by the United States or directly supported by any state or local government or by a political subdivision of any state or local government. Or approved by a state agency or subdivision of the state or accredited by a state-recognized or nationally-recognized accrediting body. And cultural center is defined as a facility by a public, private, or nonprofit organization that is open to the public as its primary purpose, the advancement and preservation of culture and arts. I turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, council. Okay, at, at this time, um, I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the city council that the HUD zoning amendment would be a more appropriate use for this, uh, this site. And that the language that has been discussed and gone over with, with council and that we had gone over at the work session be part of that, uh, recommendation to the city council. Okay.
So all changes previously discussed have been incorporated to the draft ordinance. And if you would like to add as part of your motion, the, uh, recommendation that the draft ordinance be adopted as presented.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just a comment, if you don't mind, sir. I don't believe based on what you've read that, uh, it reflects everything that we've spoken about. Uh, and, but, you know, without any further ado, we'll abstain from this vote, uh, based on that because, uh...
Well, I, I think that council can go over all, all, everything that we had discussed previously. If that would be more helpful, Mr. Commissioners Zamor.
So for example, I know that we've discussed that no construction equipment or commercial, uh, shall be, I'm sorry, no construction equipment shall be on the site, not just screened from the site. So now you only have it as commercial vehicles being screened from view. We also said that there should not be any storage of it inside outdoors. And I've noticed that you mentioned that some may be in the rear, uh, setback. And if I'm incorrect, you could please correct me. So those were the two sticking points. And I know we talked about the, the building in the walls and that we could discuss later on with, if, if, if this application ever comes back to us, we could handle it then, we don't have to handle it now. But, uh, just mentioned, which is, yeah, construction equipment, which I don't see the language for, for that here in your, in your new iteration. And I definitely don't see the language for any, uh, material, not just the ones you, you went down for, any storage whatsoever, outdoor storage whatsoever, just like...
Counsel, can you address that? Because I, I had, was under the impression that that had been in the, um, the recommendation that we were presenting to the city council.
Currently, the outdoor storage of materials, equipments, pallets, supplies, and/or other industrial items of any kind shall be subject to the board for review and approval.
Right, I, I, I don't think you'd need to even come here. I think we should just categorically in this, in this zone, say it's just not allowed.
All right, so I think, I think that, I think that what had been discussed, um, council, was that the recommendation was to not have storage, you know, to the city council.
Okay, duly noted, no outdoor storage allowed.
And I'll give, I'll give some, some backdrop to that. During, uh, a previous meeting when we had the applicant there, uh, the applicant noted to us that they're unsure of what they want to do, so they want this zone as open as possible. And I remember saying to them, well, that's a problem for us as a planning board because we need to know exactly what you're going to do and not leave it open. Uh, and since, so if you can't tell us exactly what you're going to do, then we have to make it the most restrictive as possible. Uh, and, and that is why we updated the language to what I've just mentioned.
Okay, so outdoor storage will be stricken. Your second point was regarding buffering of parked commercial vehicles. The parking of commercial vehicles shall be buffered, screened, located as far as possible from the public streets and/or right-of-way, not visible from public view, and located on the periphery of the site or behind the buildings. What is the board's pleasure regarding that?
Right, so, so there, we don't have any language about construction equipment and construction vehicles, which are a little bit different than just a vehicle with commercial plates. Like, I, I have a van, it has commercial plates, but it looks like a limousine. Yeah, that's just me, but it has commercial plates. So, uh, a vehicle like that, yes, while, you know, it perhaps can be screened, whatever, uh, that's fine. But when it comes to construction vehicles, do we have any language specifically to construction vehicles such as tractors, uh, lifts, uh, those type of, you know, uh...
Heavy trucks.
Yeah, heavy trucks, dump trucks.
We can include language that reads the parking of the equipment and construction vehicles shall be prohibited?
Correct.
Okay, duly noted.
And, and just a little backdrop on that, when the applicant first came to us with this project, they had a beautiful rendering of an office building with a, uh, with a, a lake and a, or a pond with a fountain. And they wanted to make it a very nice headquarters for their construction company. I applauded that personally. And then it slowly drifted to, well, we want to rent it out to other construction companies. And if the, if the electrician has some, uh, some, uh, roles of, uh, of, of, they need to leave on the property for a while, or, or we have pallets from things we want to leave on the... Then it started becoming a construction warehouse slash office, uh, but construction yard. And that is inappropriate for that zone in a context. And so this is the backup for that language. We don't want it to, it seemed that if this was drifting from an office building, having employees parking their cars and doing the business of construction, but not the construction business there. So if you start allowing dump trucks to be, uh, staged there, mechanic shop, uh, materials on the open property, that's when, and, and again, we don't have a great history in this city recently, uh, you know, as, as far as I've been here, of enforcement. I believe we, it's the administration's hopes that we get better at that. Actually, they, they may be getting better at that because at 3 o'clock in the morning, I left my commercial van on the street because I was fixing the driveway and I got a ticket at 3:00 in the morning on a double dead-end block. So someone's enforcing something, so I applaud that and I'm happy to pay that ticket. But besides that, we have to make it a little bit easier on our administrators in terms of enforcement so that there's no black, and I'm sorry, there's no gray areas, that everything is black and white. I rest.
So would you like to make a motion with that, with those amendments, Commissioners Zamor?
Yes, I'll make a motion with those amendments.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion, uh, with the amendments as proposed, that we shall, uh, move this forward and bring it to, send it to the city council as the planning board's recommendation.
All right, council, do you have the, um, the language that we're, that we're talking so that it can be incorporated into the recommendation?
Yes, generally, the two definitions that were read earlier. This is, no outdoor storage shall be permitted on the sites and the parking of heavy equipment and construction will also be prohibited.
Okay. Thank you.
Before, before we continue, I have a question. And, and that question is, given that this is by and large a recommendation to the city council, couldn't the city council effectively ignore all of these recommendations and do what it wants to do?
Yeah.
Yes, the recommendations of the city council can, um, choose to, um, listen to what the planning board or any of the various boards, um, if they've asked for any other recommendations and they can, um, you know, go along with it, not go along with it, modify it, it's, it's up to them.
So if, if, if that's the case, would it be helpful to have representatives from the planning boards and possibly each land use board to have a meeting with the city council and explain, uh, their recommendations, you know, in, in more of a one-on-one setting so they can get more context beyond what is on the piece of paper?
Well, I, 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 yes, I mean, could, could, could that occur? It's certainly asked, but we could also ask, uh, staff to, um, you know, communicate the, um, the intent of the, the letter. And if they have, uh, questions in regards to that, certainly make ourselves available and we can certainly do a Zoom meeting.
Yeah, I, I think, and that, and I think that is a, uh, great recommendation, Mr. Chairman Selsey, I agree with that. The only reason I was raising it is because I think that, uh, Commissioners Zamor raised some valid points and I fear some of which could get lost in the translation of just giving the city council a piece of paper with recommendations on it.
What I can do is request or speak with the clerk's office and see whether, well, first I'll canvass which board members might be available to attend the city council's next work session.
I would make myself available.
I'll find out what date that is and then I can ask the city clerk if, uh, time can be given for the board to discuss this matter.
So let me, so if I, if I may, so let me try to interject for a moment. I think the most streamlined way to do that is to, one, let's, um, look at you, let's make sure we take the board's recommendations that the context behind their recommendations and have, have that printed to the, um, finance and planning chair committee, um, which I think is Councilman Griffith and Councilman Thompson, to have that discussion with the committee because basically the recommendations that would come from this board would then be going to that committee to go forth to the main committee and see, you know, they, they may want to have discussions, those two on that committee may want to have discussion with the board prior to that. And that would then also meet the public meetings law where you wouldn't have three or more, the majority of the council, and have to call it a public meeting and then you could have that full conversation.
I think that's, that's an excellent point, Commissioner Morton. Thank you for bringing it up. I would agree. Okay, is everyone in agreement?
I am in agreement.
Yes.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, I believe we need a second and then we could go ahead and vote.
I did. Let me second it again.
Okay, so there's, there's a motion, there is a second in regards to, uh, motion. So all in favor of, uh...
Aye.
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 All right, the motion passes unanimously. Now, back to, uh, what Commissioner Morton had just, uh, suggested. Is everyone in agreement? I think that that's the way that it should be done, going to the real estate, to the committee first. Speak to, uh, the chair and, and vice chair of that committee and...
Finance and planning, yes.
And have them bring it to, uh, to the full council when their work's up.
I'm in agreement.
All right, Commissioner Dango?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Troleo?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, council. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving to 3.2. All right, uh, according to Chapter 53 dot 3 H1 of the city charter, the planning board may make recommendations to the zoning board on use area variance applications regarding the assessment of the arrangement, layout, and design of a proposed use of a single parcel of land. Calendar 1753 Dazzy, 351 South First Avenue, Section 169.31, Block 3127, Lot 24, located in the RMF 6.75 zoning district. The applicant Cassandra Taylor, represented by, um, Ed Di Amore, AIA, seeks to construct a garage in the rear of the house. The applicant does not meet the appropriate setbacks required to construct the driveway and garage. Therefore, area variances are requested. Secret determination, this action is a type-two action in accordance with Title 6 CRR dash NY 617 of the New York State Codes, Rules, and Regulations, thereby ending the secret process. Okay, do we have the architect, Ted Di Amore? Waiting?
Yes, this is Deputy Commissioner Molina, I'm promoting him so he can speak.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Commissioner.
He's on video, but we cannot hear him.
Shall I start, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, we can't see you.
Okay, well...
Are you, are you able to turn it on in case you need to share any, any, uh, any documents with us?
I've got a share screen button, uh, here that I can bring up the drawing.
All right, is there a button, is there a button where we can see you as well?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go.
And I hit start video, now I'm off.
Okay.
I can see myself.
We can see you now.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, project, um, the project just described you had one error and that is that I don't need a variance for the garage setbacks. The garage setbacks are more than the requirement.
Okay.
There's a three-foot setback on the rear yard and side yard and I have three. So the contractor has two inches to make a mistake with.
Okay.
Set up the, um, we had a revision, uh, to the plan that you saw last month and I can share that with you, to show you what happened. We had a, um, that the owner's contractor had built without a permit and the owner didn't know that a permit was required for it. And, um, when we took a look at how to legalize it, found out that in the amount of space we had in the front yard, there's not enough space to put a code-compliant ramp that can get the wheelchair-bound mom of the owner to grade. So we have opted for a wheelchair lift in front yard. And I have a revised site plan that was submitted and also a photograph of the lift, just so you guys can have a look at it. I know you don't rule on it and eventually it goes to the ARB. Would you like to, your opinion? When we took away the amount of space the ramp took and just put, uh, a small wheelchair lift in the side yard on the, uh, north side of the house, we reduced the impervious surface from 75% down to 68% and computed the lot coverage of the house. We are less than 1% over on the lot coverage, which is, um, you know, it's tough to do when you have a, um, undersized lot. And I might mention that, um, there are 17 other houses in this neighborhood that have a driveway in their side yard right up against the neighbor's property line practically. We're going to be four inches away and, um, it's, it's common in this neighborhood, that's why all the houses were built. So, uh, if you'd like, I can bring the drawing up for your attention. So if you'd like, I can bring the drawing up for your attention.
Yes, please.
So Mr. Demore, are you saying that it would be, obviously, the other driveways are, they are so-called, they're non-conforming, but they are existing, so, you know, this new one would not be conforming to the current zoning?
That's correct. That's what we're at the zoning board for, the variance. And I've got a drawing that should be coming up any second.
The zoning board would give you a, a, a setback variance?
Yes.
And what's the current setback variance right now?
If they give it to us, we're asking for four inches. And normally, two feet is required.
Mr. Demore, what, what's the code I meant to ask?
Oh, the code is three feet.
Three feet, okay, so, uh, I just wanted to note that to the board, because we had this discussion during the work session in terms of what the current code was. And counsel, you recall?
Yes, I did send an email reply. There is a requirement that a driveway be three feet from the property line, and the buffer within that three feet must be grass or dirt, and driveways must be a minimum of nine feet wide.
Okay, thank you.
I'd, I'd also like to mention one of the benefits of having this driveway i- is that this is a non-compliant property with respect to having parking on-site. The zoning for one-family houses requires two parking spaces on-site. We can have one space in a garage and one space in the, um, black, on the blacktop in front of the garage, more than three feet from the side yard, once the, uh, once we clear the house. And that'd be a benefit that outweighs having the driveway right next to the neighbor.
Right, and Mr. Mr. Demore, the reason that this is being done is because there is a, a mobility issue?
Yes, um, right now, the homeowner has to hunt for a parking space or double park to get her mom out of the car, and hunt for a driveway to bring her mom in a wheelchair up to the house to get her in every time they want to go someplace.
Okay, so what you're looking for is a reasonable accommodation for this disability?
That's correct.
What accommodation are you looking for at the street? Like, on the street side, any, if any, besides the curb?
The, um, the city code allows a twelve-foot curb cut for every property in Mount Vernon without having to go to the city council to get approval. It's automatic, anybody gets twelve feet.
Okay, anything else?
That you have to go to city council for approval of.
Okay, any other street-side accommodations?
No, nothing, we're, we're not looking for anything.
Okay.
In fact, we're going to be taking down the ramp that was built illegally, so we won't have an encroachment on the city property at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Last time, there was a question if there was a drywall, and Mr. Trolleio showed that there's a drywall right there. And that's what we're doing to control the drainage.
So everything's pitching back?
From, from about this point forward, it's pitching back, and we've accommodated the drainage in the drywells.
Well, how do you accommodate what's not from that point, from that point forward towards the street? How do you accommodate that? Hundred percent?
I believe it goes under the, I believe it goes under the curb. And if you've got one of those, it's golden. They don't allow them anymore, but if the front of your house pitches to a leader, and it goes under the curb, you're good. They don't take that.
I understand. Could you walk me through, could you walk me through that?
Pardon me?
I don't understand what you mean. It goes under the curb, under what curb?
Uh, here's the curb in the front of the house.
Right, but it doesn't, I'm sorry, doesn't the current code, uh, the way it's written, it, it requires that a hundred percent of the water from an impervious surface be retained on the property?
This, uh, if you have a house that predates that code, and you have a non-conform, you don't have to follow that.
Correct, you're, you're, the house predates it, but your new driveway does not.
The driveway, the driveway pitches backwards.
No, I understand, but, but not the entire driveway, you said from a point towards the middle somewhere.
You know, we, um, we didn't have a topographic map made, but it, it could be that all that pitches back. I can verify that.
All right, to, and, 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 in the, in the event.
Control with the building department, it's only a one-family house.
Okay, is, is, is there a way in which we can retain the water on the property?
Yes, yes, any, any water, if any of this, if any of this, um, water pitches forward from anywhere, I can put a drain at the front and put a pipe to a second drywall that'll be in the back of the property. I have room for two drywells.
All right, Demore, from my point of view, regarding this application, I, I think it's a good thing, I, I don't mind that the new driveway will be non-conforming as well. It's similar to the other ones there, you really don't have the room anyway to conform. You're going to be increasing or not taking away from off-street, you know, on-street parking, and it, it helps your, your client, that's fantastic. The only thing I'd like to see is that you retain a hundred percent of the water on the property, and that all the current leaders from the roof go into the drywall and, and not onto the, or, or, or just be dumped onto, let's say, you, you know, sometimes they just put it onto a splash guard or something like that, so.
You don't have room for that, Mr. Demore.
Don't have room for what, to, to?
Additional drywells. The requirement for drywall is that it be ten feet from the house, and ten feet from the side yard, or a side plot line, or a rear plot line.
You have retention tanks, right?
Pardon?
You have retention tanks, right?
Drywells are retention tanks, any subgrades, any subgrade retention or detention structure has to be ten feet from a building. And I don't have the space. I have room for one more drywall, right where I have the marker, under the drywall.
We're talking about the same thing, I'm asking you to make sure your leaders go into that drywall, the one that you already have.
Yes, but I can't, uh, I can't take, I don't have, I will need a third drywall to accommodate the leaders that go from the front of the house. Right now, the city is perfectly happy to let me drain to the street, and they won't take it away from me. And I don't have room to put a drywall in the front of the house, and I don't have room for a third drywall in the back of the house.
You're saying the capacity would not, you don't have the capacity in the two drywalls that you'll be having in the rear?
That's correct, I did the computations already.
Okay.
Ted, what size, are you using Caltech storm chambers?
I'm not, because I can't get those far enough, I would have to use more land area, and I don't have the land area that's ten feet away from the building, and ten feet away from the property line.
So what are you, what are you using there?
We're using a six-foot-deep by six-foot-diameter concrete drywall. It holds more water in the, in that amount of space than the Caltech rechargers can hold.
So if you could, you, you might.
I've done the math on it, and I'm certain that this is the proper way to go. I've been doing this a long time, and I would hate not to get your recommendation tonight and hold up my client a further month before going to the zoning board. We'd like to get back to them this month with your recommendation.
Ted, what stops you from putting it under the driveway?
Uh, I am, I'm, I'm going to put a second drywall over here, right on the driveway.
You said you have no room in the front, but the driveway goes all the way to the curb, why, why not put it under the driveway?
Because I don't have room ten feet from the porch foundation, and ten feet from the side property line to get a drywall in there.
Okay, I rest, thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't fit it.
All right, but you, you did mention that you would have a drain there, though, you could put a drain.
I can put a drain and pipe back for the, uh, for the driveway.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Just, just for clarity, Mr. Demore, can you say where you're supposed to put a drywall?
The second drywall in the back of the property, under the, um, under the asphalt pavement, right beside the drywall that you already indicated, two feet away from it. That of one drawing I submit to the building department.
Okay, thank you.
With, with, with the drain and the piping stack, right?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, you said with the drain and the piping spec. Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, what's your motion?
Motion to approve this application with the, with the recommendations that we've just put in.
Just to make sure that I'll be writing it up. So the, the board is saying that the proposal is in keeping with the neighborhood character. You have no objection to the zoning board's approval, and you recommend that stormwater, stormwater management be included, or the second be placed in the back of the property under the asphalt pavement, which is about two feet away from the existing drywall, along with the drain and piping specs. I'll word that more articulately, but I just want to make sure I captured the essence.
Correct.
Yes, sounds good to me.
Okay, so Commissioners Amore made a motion, do we have a second to the motion?
I second.
All right, Commissioner White has seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're unanimous, thank you very much, Mr. Demore. And actually, you know what, I'm going to go out of order since I have you on, because you're on for another case. So I'm going to call four point two, which is case number two dash zero, two dash two zero two zero, seven seventy South Columbus Avenue, section one sixty-nine point five six, block thirty-one thirty-nine, lot eighteen, located in the I industrial zoning district. The applicant, seven seventy South Columbus Avenue LLC, represented by Ted Demore, AIA, seeks an addition and alteration to a building and site for use as an enterprise truck rental office and indoor truck washing facility for the rental trucks. The applicant seeks site plan approval. Secret determination is unlisted, act coordinated review. The planning board must declare its intent to serve as lead agency in accordance with Title Six C R R dash N Y six seventeen point six D and three of the New York State Codes, Rules, and Regulations. Mr. Demore?
Okay. Shall I start with the drawings, or shall I start with the description without the drawings?
If you can give us an overview and a description.
Okay. For the past fifty years, there has been a contractor on this site that did roofing and some sheet metalwork. And he had more building than he needed, and at various times, he rented one building for auto repair. He had a propane tank, selling propane another time, that was in ninety-two. And that was the subject of a zoning case back in nineteen ninety-two. And he's been just by himself for the past several years, and he sold his property to the seven seventy South Columbus Avenue Realty LLC recently. And that company is owned by a contractor that was going to use the building for himself, but he got an offer from Enterprise. They were interested in leasing the property, and the site is now designed for use by Enterprise Truck Rental. The building took up over about fifty-three hundred square feet of the twenty thousand square foot site. And we're tearing down the part of the building closest to the street is a three-bay garage, and we're adding a hundred and ten square feet to the what used to be the middle section of the building. And we are reducing the building area size from about fifty-three hundred square feet down to thirty-seven hundred square feet, thirty-seven hundred and change. With the office, the part of the building that used to be the middle part of the building is now going to be a truck wash facility, because they're renting trucks and they want to rent them clean. And the part of the building that the contractor used for office and for fabrication is going to be used for his office use. And some storage, some supplies for his truck wash facility. And so that, we have, you have in front of you full-size plans that show how we plan to use the site with the, with the amount of office space we have. And the truck wash, we are required to have eight parking spaces, and we provided nine parking spaces. And we have eight or not, oh, jeez, I, I didn't write this number down. We have truck parking for about eleven trucks to be rented. And once somebody rents a truck, they put their car in the truck space, so we've got plenty of parking on the site. We've got planting, we've got drainage, we've got new asphalt, and handicap accessibility included for the building, a new storefront entrance, and a new facade for the part of the building being used for truck washing. And I can, uh, and we've got a lighting plan that conforms with the zoning that's in the city zoning code as well. So I can take you through the drawings if you like.
Okay, just have one question before you take us through the drawings. There won't be any type of repairs done in, in the car washing area, correct?
No, not at all, they, they send all their trucks out for repair.
Okay. Okay, thank you, please, please go over the, the plans.
Okay. Let me get rid of the last, head up. And here we are. Right here. I didn't tell you where the site was. I, I figure all of you members of the board know where the Columbus diner is, down where South Fulton Avenue meets South Columbus Avenue. This site is right next door to it. So I have a map of the city here, and it shows where the site is, so the members of the public know. I'm having trouble zoom, here it is, I can zoom in here. Now, let me move over. So here's the surrounding zoning. We're in industrial zone, right here, I'm surrounded by industrial properties. This is what's known as the southeast industrial area. And the closest next zone we have is Landscape Industrial, and after that, we have the Bronx. So that takes, that and a little bit closer in, to show you what's surrounding us, we have buildings within a hundred feet. Our site is here, we've got the Columbus diner here, we've got a contractor. Well, actually, we have a parking lot that serves the storage building, which is behind us here, so this is all their parking lot. And this is the parking lot for the diner. Across the street, we have gas stations, we have St. Paul's Church here. We have an industrial building here, industrial contractors building here, and another industrial building here, we're in an industrial neighborhood. We have a Dunkin' Donuts on the corner. So it's mixed use. This is the Mako car painting place over here, ball chain is over here. So there is that. Now, let me bring you the survey. and we'll bring you the survey. The survey is showing you that it's a slightly I'm sorry, I can't control this laptop while it's my desktop. Okay, so we have a site uh that's higher over here, and it slopes down here. And the driveway entrance is here. We're not changing the driveway entrance a bit. I'll bring you to the site plan. Second, here we are. All right, there is a site demolition plan that I can bring you to. Let me swing over here. Let's move, move over there. There it is. I'm sorry about this. It's moving faster than I Right here is the site demolition plan. There's a uh, a wooden pavilion uh that was used for outdoor storage. It's being removed. It was attached to the uh original building. Um, and this area here is a three bay parking lot. You've all had um, full-size drawings to look at for the past um, ten days or so, I guess, but this is the three bay parking lot, and this building is slightly this part of the building is slightly recessed from that. Uh, we're gonna take this wall down and square the building off. And that shows on this part of the plan here. Next time, I'm gonna crawl in by phone and have my off my regular desktop, which is a lot easier to manipulate, and you don't really need to see me in the picture. And I'll and I'll make a faster presentation. Here it is. Um, we have part, we have a handicap parking space here. We have a ramp to get up to a former loading area. Uh, so handicap space, um, two more spaces, a few more spaces. We have an outdoor um corral to um collect the rubbish in. Not that we're expecting that much rubbish, but a a third yard yard container will be picked up by the private carter um, once or twice a week. Uh, it's set back five feet from the property line. And then we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight truck spaces. And we have parking spaces for cars here, here, one more here, and one more on the other side. Uh, down here, at the bottom of the site, we have a trench drain because we're pitching all the way down here. And we have a um, a setup of Coltech rechargers that pick up I hope you don't mind I'm jumping around from what we're doing with the building, what we're doing with the site, what we're doing with the drainage. But this is all the stuff that you're interested in.
Uh huh.
So I'm jumping around a little bit. Our drainage is coming down the hill, uh picked up in the trench drain, brought back by pipe. Uh, we control ten percent of a hundred-year storm in these Coltech rechargers. And right here uh is a city storm drain. Uh, this got worked out with the city engineer. He wanted me to hold ten percent of the site drainage for a hundred-year storm, if I could, on the site. And then uh, so every normal rainstorm, I'm controlling all the water on the site. When we get a big rainstorm, there's an overflow that goes to the city storm drain. There's a catch basin right here. And in the site utility drawing is a diagram of how we are connecting to the city storm drain with the um permission of the city engineer because it's a standard to be allowed to do that. That's what the storm drains are for. So, um.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, yes, counsel.
I'm sorry, Mr. Demore, I'm just going to ask you to please repeat your stormwater management plan. I did meet with the Buildings Department. They mentioned that the area is prone to flooding. And they just wanted to make sure that your stormwater management plan was adequate.
Um, the uh, it's not on a site, it's not on a FEMA flooding plan at all. Um, what happens is the storm drain fills up at high tide. And that's why we're controlling as much water as we can on the site. Um, and before it goes into the storm drain. So high tide only comes twice a, twice a day. And um, the city engineer, I think, knows more about it than the Building Department, and the city engineer um gave his approval to this design.
And I know you just did, but would you mind walking?
Oh, sure.
Rooted.
Sure, um, the drainage comes downhill. It gets corrected at the uh face of the property where the driveway is. Um, if I could zoom in here just a little bit, let me move this a little bit. Make this just a little bit bigger. All right, right. Get caught up, okay. So we have three, seven, uh, eight, nine, ten, twelve, twelve Coltech rechargers here. Uh, these are um underground storage tanks uh for water that hold the water uh and let it uh gradually drain down through a twelve-inch gravel bed that they have underneath them. So they they hold a lot of water like a reservoir and then let it drop down through the grade. Um, here, uh, used to be the um stream bed of the Hutchinson River. It's uh sandy down there, and there's very good drainage. So most of the time, we are controlling all our drainage to drip down. Um, the city storm drain that uh we're worried about the flooding about is down almost thirteen feet fro- lower than the street. That's where the flooding occurs, thirteen feet under my street level, not at the street level. So um, that's what the city engineer was worried about. That's why he told me to control the area um flooding in these on-site in whatever manner I saw fit. So I could do it with these Coltech rechargers, or I could do it with precast concrete drywells. Um, but I don't wanna go too deep. Um, I'd rather keep them closer to the surface. Um, keeping in mind the um high tide and low tide problems. So that describes the site drainage uh plan.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, last concern. Uh, the Building Department did also request that the plans include how to plan to manage, I think they called it like grease, let me get the language. They said with the number of vehicles, even though no maintenance or mechanical work is planned for that area, that the vehicles would likely produce some type of grease or discharge, and they wanted to know what plans were in place to manage that.
Um, we will take a look at the code. Um, but normally, a parking lot everywhere in the city, um, if you're not requiring every parking lot that gets looked at to put in an oil separator device, then there shouldn't be one on this site either. Because it's got no more uh chance of developing um oil spills or gasoline spills than any other parking lot in the city. Uh, construction contractors have um trucks on their sites. They don't have to put in oil separators. Um, we're willing to discuss it with you, but I think it's um uh something that we can look at. Uh, it's regulated by the state code. If it's required by the state code, we'll put it. If it's not, um, then uh, then we won't.
More, uh, I'm sorry, counsel, was that sufficient for you? Are you done?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Uh, no, that was to counsel. Are you, are you uh, answer your question? Are you done? I have a question.
Well, if if the board is comfortable with a condition, that's as if uh New York State Code requires that site plans include management and capture of grease and pollutants, oil, things of that nature, we can include that as a condition. That would be sufficient.
Okay, thank, thank you, counsel. Commissioners Demore?
Yeah, I'm kind of with Mr. Demore on this in in the sense that uh if we require for this parking lot, uh which is just parking, uh then we need to require it for every other parking lot. So if it's not currently required for any other parking lot, I don't think this one's any different. Uh, now that said, on the inside, where you are washing the cars, I mean, the trucks, uh, what type of state requirement or regulation are you subject to uh in terms of truck washing, in terms of the turd, the detergents that you use, and how you treat those detergents? And uh, and do they go into the city waste?
We are planning on having an oil separator inside the building.
Uh huh, okay.
Inside the building.
Inside the building, okay, that's fair enough. And how about the detergents that you use? Are they uh, are they uh under some type of New York State Code, DEC, BEP, uh? Anything?
I ha- I um invited the um, the regional manager of uh Enterprise to be on the phone uh not on the on the meeting with us, and he's here. He could answer that question. But I think they're just normal uh car wash detergents.
Okay, I I know that car wash uh, car washes have a very uh, they're very strictly regulated by the state uh in terms of the uh products that they use uh and and how they uh, and how they they uh disperse the waste. So I just want you to walk me through. I'm not that familiar with it, but I know that it exists. I mean, I could do the research, which I I would send to the the planning staff to do the research, but since you you guys are building this site, you must have done the research already, and you know what those codes and regulations are. So can you please walk us through them?
Can we have um, can we have the Enterprise representative speak about this?
What's the name, what's the name of the representative?
Uh, John Petry.
Okay.
Well, let me ask, you want me to run through the rest of the site uh, uh site planning aspects first and save that question
Sure, sure.
later in case you have some more questions of Mr. Petry?
Sure.
Okay, all right. So let me, let me back up out of this. Um, one of the uh so uh, uh, the questions are uh about this, you know, what are we doing with the site? Um, now here's the site utility plan that shows the uh, the drainage into the city storms manhole. If I can just make it come up a little bit. Well, you can see the top of it here, and now we can't see it at all. I'm sorry.
That's okay. We all have large plans. Uh, let me ask you a question. You have a uh, a backflow preventer on that with with taps into the city drain?
It will be, yes.
Is it shown on the plan?
Um, these plans get brought to sixty-five percent completion in case there are things that um the planning board is on board or the ARB wants. Uh, so we don't have to change too many things, and we finish the plans with
I got you.
finer details later.
Okay, so the law, that would be great, especially if the city drain is prone to flooding. Uh, it'd be great to have a backflow preventer, so to get this back through and onto your property. And
The Building Department requires it on every commercial building and multifamily building. And uh, we uh plan, we we plan to put one in, or we won't get a C R at the end of the job.
Sounds good, sounds good. And how about
Put one.
What's your plan for lighting?
I have a site lighting plan.
Okay.
And uh I can do it.
Before you switch uh uh plans, I'll tell you what, I'll stick to what's on this plan right now. Uh, you you have a chain link fence? I believe those are yours. Those are not existing.
We have, but we have, you know what? I have a rendering uh that's in your package, and I can bring it up. Here it is.
Okay, so it's not a chain link fence?
We have a um, a full wrought iron fence.
Okay, great. But your plan still says chain link?
Uh, um, maybe that was an existing, is that on the survey or is that on uh?
It's in your plan, the one you just had up on the computer screen.
All right, um, my bad if I didn't uh catch that. I have chain link on the sidelines and in the rear, uh, actually, this sideline, we're putting a fence. The back property line, the fence belongs to the neighbor because we're not um it's on his side of the property line, and on the side with uh the Columbus diner, the fence is about a foot on their side of the property line.
The diner is the the Dunkin' Donuts? Yes, I thought it was a gas station. You don't board the diner, do you?
Yeah, we boarded the diner.
I thought you boarded the Dunkin' Donuts on the corner.
No, they're across the street from us on diagonally up the corner.
Uh, let me just take a quick look here.
It's on the front page of the, it's on the cover sheet of the drawings.
Yes, yes, I see, I see. You're, yeah, you're next to the diner. Yes, yes, you're next to the diner. Uh huh. So next to the diner, you have what type of fencing?
Uh, uh, we don't have any fencing. The diner has the fencing. Uh, it's a foot off our property line. It it doesn't make sense to us to put another fence up a foot away.
No, I agree, I agree. Okay.
And we have uh planting, uh, we have planting in the front, and we have planting in the back. We have some planting in front of the building. Uh, and we have um, uh, space for two large trees.
Uh, street trees you're talking about, or?
Uh, trees on our property, shade trees.
And
When they get mature.
You have a uh, what type of sidewalk replacement? You have a total sidewalk replacement?
Uh, it's already been replaced uh when the owner was getting ready to lease the property. He uh applied to the um DPW and got a permit and replaced all the sidewalk on his own.
Okay, fantastic. You asked for a variance uh or some accommodation or in terms of the setback requirements on the property. Uh, because you said you couldn't, you couldn't make it happen in terms of the size of the parking spaces, of the parking spaces. Will you, will you walk us through that, please?
Yeah, sure. Um, let me drag this up and bring this in just a second. All right, um, show you on the site plan here. Um, the largest truck, the largest truck that Enterprise is renting is about thirty-five feet um with the cab and the uh, and the straight body, they're straight body trucks. So I've got thirty-five feet parking spaces here, and if I have to put a buffer on this side, I won't be able to get my trucks out and drive them around to get them uh out of the, out of the site. So I don't have room for a buffer there at all. But um, these are clean trucks, and about one-third of the space is cars. And what am I buffering against is a parking lot, which are cars. So if the the folks on this side of the property will get out of their car and see the back of another car um, four or five feet away, I don't think it um, it it calls for a buffer. And you've got that kind of activity going on. On the other side of the property, um, this building has been on the property line since it was built. Um, we plan to put a road bill here because this entire space is used for trucks. So we are, uh, well, they've got people that do it. I'm not driving it, uh, and the public isn't driving it. But the trucks are gonna be driven up the driveway and into this truck bay where the truck will get washed. And if I tried to give a five-foot buffer here, um, And if I tried to give a five-foot buffer here, um, I won't be able to get into the garage with the maneuverable, maneuverability, uh, that I'm looking for to get trucks in. And, uh, the neighbor on this side, this entire space is, uh, I showed you on the cover drawing when I, we started, is the parking lot for the storage building that's behind us over here.
Yeah.
So, um, don't really need a buffer to separate parking from parking, automobile use from automobile use. Um, back here, this is
I'm sorry, before you continue, is that according to the code?
I'm sorry, no, that's according to my opinion that I'm asking for a waiver of the requirement that the planning board is able to give. It's not a common item, it's a planning board item.
I, I got you, just checking for clarity, thank you.
Oh, I'm, I'm not trying to be a wise guy, believe me. Um, uh, or, or rewrite the code. Anyway, we have a large, uh, uh, area here that in many parking lots would be, um, exed out asphalt, but we are making a planter and putting a, uh, a big shade tree here, well, it'll grow to be a big shade tree. Uh, we have planting over here, planting beside our building here, and we're putting a, uh, a shade tree here behind our trash corral, and another tree down here inside our prop, no, I'm sorry, that's going to be the pole sign. And, uh, this will be planters here on both, both sides of our entrance.
Let me ask you a question, what percentage of your property is impervious surface?
Uh, a hundred percent.
Okay, what's?
No, no, I'm sorry, it's not a hundred percent, because I've got so much planting, give me a second.
All right, all right, let me ask you this question, what's the code?
The code allows a hundred percent. I've got less than a hundred percent. In industrial areas, it allows a hundred percent. If I could reliably zoom into this box right here, you've got it on your plan. The impervious surface is listed there.
No worries, no worries, I, I
I got it, I got it, it's two steps away. I've got ninety-six percent impervious.
Ninety-six percent, okay, all right, uh.
Totalize a hundred.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, great, uh, let's see what else, uh, okay, go ahead, thank you, you could keep going.
All right, so let me, um, zoom down to the next plan, which is the landscaping plan. I switch it. Okay, um, so, we've got, uh, shrubs, shrubs that are growing here, these aren't flowers, they're shrubs. There's a street, a, a, uh, a shade tree here, here. So two shade trees, and we've got, um, plantings in front of the building and plantings along the street here.
Okay, fantastic, so, uh, this, uh, this waiver that you're, uh, due to the hardship that you have in terms of, because maneuvering your trucks or parking, uh, obviously, we didn't pause, uh, so we discussed during the work session that, uh, moving forward, uh, we as a board feel that the applicant should, uh, give something back for any type of waivers, uh, that we're just not going to, uh, you know, give waivers out nilly-willy without something in return for the public good, to be used for the public good. So, uh, I haven't had a chance to, to think about this, because I don't believe you participated. You, you could tell me if you did in the, uh, Monday work session. I know you weren't allowed to, to comment, but, uh, did you listen in on that at all?
I'm s- I'm sorry, could you repeat that? Was that directed to me?
Were you listening in on the Monday, uh, work session?
No, I was not listening in.
Okay.
No, I didn't know it was allowed.
No, you can listen in, you just can't comment, but you can listen in. Uh, we don't take comments, we don't take public comment, but the public is allowed, it is a public meeting. Uh, but that said, surprised you didn't know that, but anyway, uh, that said, uh, we agreed that, uh, that we'd be looking into, and I believe, uh, Council, what other agency, uh, uh, requires a fee for waivers?
Zoning.
Zoning. The, the zoning, uh, aboard, uh, department already does that, so we're looking to implement the same here. Uh, so I would take a recommendation from you, Mr. Zamora, in terms of, you know, what you feel would be fair, uh, so that we can deliberate on that.
Um, I have a, uh, triangle of space here that, um, well, I don't know if I want to suggest this for, for, uh, planting, because I don't want anything too high, because I have a pole-mounted sign, where so far, set back in the street, we want to have a pole-mounted sign like the diner does, um, so we can be seen by people coming up and down Columbus Avenue. Um, so, I don't want to put a street tree in, uh, that will block, block the signage, but in this corner of the property, I could put a tree that, um, would not, uh, would not be blocking the, blocking the, um, blocking the sign from visibility. Would you be happy to see another tree? You know, that's a shame, on the sidewalk.
Let me ask you a question, what's the value of this renovation?
Um, I haven't done a cost estimate.
Uh, ballpark to your, based on your, uh, experience?
Can you give a range?
I think, uh, maybe two hundred thousand?
Two hundred thousand, okay. Uh, I would suggest that the board in lieu of, uh, the waivers, that, uh, if we, if the board so chooses to accommodate, uh, Mr. Zamora's client, that the planning board would, uh, would to, uh, to impose a ten percent of the value of the
That seems like a lot.
It seems like a lot, but it really is not, I mean, or else could you do business without it? Because if you don't need it, then you don't have to worry about it.
Uh, for the public benefit, we'd rather give you a couple, a couple of street trees than, um, than give you ten thousand dollars. Maybe five percent?
Well, we're not, I, I mean, honestly, the, the street trees is a requirement that we can impose upon you, uh, uh, just as a right, and, uh, and I, I, and I would make that recommendation, actually, but perhaps not, uh, if you would consider, you could go back and, and speak to your client and, uh, consider the ten percent, uh, the ten percent. As I said, it's something that we're doing moving forward, because in the past, the city just kept giving, uh, waivers and variances, letting things go without us to give back for the, so that we could implement, uh, further benefits, uh, to the city in future development.
Um, I've, I've got something else I'd like you to consider.
Okay.
Right now, you're looking at a vacant piece of property, and you're looking at, um, a developer coming in, investing in Mount Vernon, creating jobs for Mount Vernon, spending money in Mount Vernon, and money's going to spread out from money he's making, he's going to be paying taxes, and by giving a waiver, you're allowing this property to get used, and I think you should look at it in a sense that we're doing this so we can bring business to Mount Vernon and improve Mount Vernon, create job, more jobs are going to be here than ever were when the guy was a contractor. Um, the taxes are going to be different, um, and that you should look at yourself as a board that is encouraging development in Mount Vernon, instead of making this guy look for land in the Bronx that doesn't, um, ask for money. Norah Shell doesn't ask for money, Yanka doesn't ask for money. Um, you're in competition with those guys, I don't know if you want to get in the business of asking for money from these guys.
Okay, Mr. Zamora, thank, thank you for that comment. Council, in terms of the fee structure that the zoning board imposes, can you, can you give us an idea?
Well, Council looks into that, Mr. Zamora, I have uh, trickle-down does not work, we know that already. Uh, and what you're suggesting is a trickle-down economics theory that doesn't from Mount Vernon.
Can we just have Council answer that, and then you can talk after, please?
Council, are you ready?
Um, yes. Okay, I was just looking up in the zoning code, I know there's a fee in lieu of parking spaces and fee in lieu of impervious surface when variances are granted for those two items. There's no specific amount listed in the code. Two sixty-seven thirty-six E two is the fee in lieu of parking, and it reads
Wouldn't this have to go to the city council before you started imposing fees and get, um, advice from those guys? I don't think you can put
I would have to look, I would have to look to see if our fee schedule already exists.
Right.
What particular amounts may be, but it's provided, for example, it says fee in lieu of off-street parking spaces, this is two, two sixty-seven thirty-six E two. The applicant shall pay a parking fee. No, I'm sorry, the applicant two, uh, is two A one. The applicant shall pay a parking fee for each required space which is not provided on-site or on another lot as permitted under a certain subsection, in lieu of providing the minimum required off-street parking spaces upon approval from the zoning board of appeals of an area variance for off-street parking, and something similar also exists for impervious surface. But I would have to look into how the particular amount is determined.
Right, and Miss, and Mr. Zamora, if you're, you're looking for, um, approval from this board today, I, I think that, um, it probably would be in, in the best interest, um, to, uh, be more amenable to, uh, something, because we're trying to do this for the city. We want to improve the city, and there are a lot of things that need to be done. And, uh, obviously, the applicant has done their demographic research and found that this particular location is, is suitable and going to work very well for them. So I think for the money that Commissioner Zamora was, was, was mentioning, I don't think that they would want to walk away from this after the expenses that they've already incurred.
And, uh, why don't we, um, I, I can't speak, I can't speak for them, but they are on this, uh, Mr. Petrie's on this line, on this meeting, we can, we can ask him.
That, that would be good, because we have the other question to ask him as well.
If, yeah, do you have any more questions of me?
Uh, no, you said you have a, a lighting plan, that's great, I wanted to know, uh, we talked about the environmental, that we're going to get, uh, some, uh, some more clarity on. Uh, we talked about the, uh, the street trees and planting and sidewalk. Uh, we also talked about, uh, uh, yeah, we're, we're talking now about the setbacks, so now, I, 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 I'm good. I'm not sure if any of the other commissioners have any questions.
Mr. Chair, just one, one other issue?
Yes, well, I was going to ask before, if, if, after the other commissioners have their questions, whether or not there's any, any correspondence from, uh, any city agencies?
Okay, I can look for that. And the, the other issue while I'm, while I mute myself and look was just for site plan approval, we do need to, if Mr. Zamora can talk about vehicular and pedestrian traffic, especially with the thirty-five-foot trucks you said you'd be having, would this project have any impact on the movement of traffic in that area? Or what impact, if any?
Yes, Council, I actually, I have that on my note, if you wouldn't mind, if we could take that on after, uh, these other gentlemen speak, that'd be great. That was the last thing on my list, uh, was the, uh, the traffic study or traffic, uh, uh, plan. So, uh, you know, uh, if they need directional exits or entrances and stuff like that. So if you don't mind, I, I'd love to settle the, you know, the site, uh, issues first.
Um, I'd like to talk about the traffic for a minute, uh, and I'll tell you what's different about a truck rental, uh, business, different from a contracting business, um, or a bus company, or a lot of companies that rent sites in industrial areas, um, uh, for other businesses.
By the way, Mr. Zamora, I'll, I'll excuse you for that, because after, uh, suggested that we move on and we come back to this, uh, since you're leading the meeting, uh, it appears as if it, it's not us, uh, why don't you go ahead?
I can talk about the traffic, or no?
Well, I suggested that we didn't right now, but you went and commandeered the meeting, and you went and, and just started talking about the traffic.
I'll stop, um, I'm, I'm participating, uh, when, when you ask, I won't start.
Okay, so my suggestion is that we get back to the traffic after these gentlemen speak to the fee structure that we're, uh, we're proposing, and also, uh, speak about the, uh, let me, maybe forget what else, the, the environmental regarding the, the, the truck wash. So which, uh, what are the names of the gentleman, John, uh, Epitri, I believe you had before?
Yes, good, good evening, everybody, thank you for, uh, hopefully, everybody can hear me fine, uh, we'll start, I guess, with the easy stuff first, with respect to the question about the car wash product. Um, although I'm not a chemist, I can tell you that this is a product that we use in all our locations throughout the tri-state area and throughout the country. Um, and certainly, I can provide details if, if there's people that are smarter than me, uh, with respect to those chemicals, but I can tell you, it's all biodegradable, and the most hazardous chemicals that we use in our branches at our locations are washer fluid, windshield washer fluid, so, um, I, I can't speak to the specific component of the car wash product other than tell you it is, it is biodegradable, and I can provide information if, if you're, uh, if you prefer to see that information, I'm happy to do so.
Are there any, uh, New York State, uh, D P, D C regulations that you are aware of when it comes to car washing, uh, detergents?
Uh, no, the, the quantity of chemicals that we keep on hand do not meet that criteria. I believe it's over two hundred fifty gallons, uh, of, of product, and, and these things that we use are actually packets that dissolve in five gallons of water for one packet, so, um, based on the quantities, nothing that we use would, uh, would comply with those requirements.
Okay, so this would go into a drain that would have a, uh, a grease separator, uh, Mr. Zamora, that's what you said, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, uh, so that answers, that's sufficient for me, uh, any of the other, uh, commissioner, commissioners want to?
I didn't understand when you said a, a grease separator, what does that mean?
Uh, that, that's actually, um, he said grease separator, but earlier, we were talking about oil separator. We don't want to put oils into the, uh, storm drain system. I'm sorry, we don't want to put oils into the sanitary system. Um, all the drainage, uh, from floor drains inside the car wash go into the sanitary system, and we want to separate the oil that might wash off the truck, um, uh, from the water that goes into the storm drain, the sanitary system.
Okay.
Oil separator.
Right, so you're not going to be changing oil, changing coolant, changing wipers, everything is going to be done off-site?
Yes, at a mechanic shop.
Okay, so no minor, anything going on, right?
Just washing.
Just washing, okay.
Yeah, well, we do safety and fluid checks, but that's the extent of the work.
Safety and fluid checks, all right, so, okay. All right.
So, so, Mr. Petrie, so, uh, in your safety and fluid check, if a fluid level is low, you send the truck back out to the garage where it is, uh, replenished, or you do it on-site?
Uh, you know, topping off fluids, but they're, they're small quantities, we don't store any bulk fluids or anything of that nature.
So you would be topping off
finding in your garage?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
Uh, typical amounts that you would find in a person's home garage.
Okay, so that's based on how many trucks?
Uh, I, there's probably, there's probably a couple, you know, quarts of, of fluid at, at any time.
Right? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, minimal, minimal quantities, and, and if I, just so, maybe to help understand Maybe to help understand, and I don't want to get into the traffic situation, but just so everyone understands our business with our truck rental division. Um we don't compete with the U-Haul type operations, the majority of our business is uh longer-term. Uh contractors and and truck companies that may need an extra truck or two for two or three months at a time. Um we're not uh going after the business, somebody that needs a truck to move their their daughter into an apartment over, you know, at the end of the month and things like that, so they're typically. Uh lower, lower volume, longer term rentals.
And and that's for now, but there's nothing uh, there's nothing that would stop you from changing that if down the road that model was not successful for you?
Uh no, it's actually quite the opposite in that we've determined that the short-term rentals are are not really uh what's successful for us, so we focus on the longer term.
But you do have short-term rental trucks.
We we do, and we can do that, that's it's not the majority of our business.
Right, okay, so so the point is that it can be done, nothing would stop you from doing it if if the business environment changes because of COVID and people are moving now and businesses are not really renting trucks anymore. You can, on this property, at any given time, change your model.
We could, correct.
Right, uh uh basically, you you wouldn't let us to to put a condition that you could not, right?
No, that that would, yeah, again, I can't, if I had a crystal ball, you know, you know, I'd be doing other things.
Okay, all right, great, I appreciate that. Right, uh so the last is, uh you were here, you understood where we're heading in terms of our uh. Of our uh. Decision to to look into a fee structure for waivers and it's because uh we do actually want more development in Mount Vernon. And uh but we also need to plan for more development in Mount Vernon and we need to build up a a friendlier uh infrastructure in Mount Vernon for development. And also, we want the process uh that you guys go through on the board here to be swifter, quicker, so instead of like two, three, four months, whatever. Uh we want to, you know, be able to give you guys these waivers and move you out of this process and get you building. So we feel that there is a lot of value that we'd be providing, so it's not to penalize you, it's actually to help you move through the process. Uh we, you know, forego some things, and I think by the time we forego street trees and some other things and and your setback requirements, it allows you to do business, move through the process. But it also allows us to, you know, plan for further development, uh plan, uh you know, you know, get planners and get people to uh to make recommendations that would be pro-business. To encourage a a favorable business environment, so that's what it's for, it's not meant to be a penalty whatsoever.
No, uh uh understood, and and I guess um, you know, the only thing I could say is I was not prepared to speak to. Uh you know, something of this nature tonight, the one thing I can tell you um from from our perspective, when you look at. Um the sales tax, and I I'm not sure how that would impact the city of Mount Vernon, I'm not, certainly not an accountant. Um when you, when you rent a vehicle, the sales tax in in this part of New York is roughly twenty-five percent, it's not the standard sales tax rate, so. Um you know, there there is probably some value there, I guess, with respect to your other, with your other question. Um I I'm not sure if there's a specific dollar amount, I'm not sure if it's uh, I I just want to clarify what you're asking, is it, is it? A check to the city or is there, you know, there are there some type of agencies that you work with that that we could consider, whether it's something with uh youth or? Or food and hunger, I guess, is my question.
No, it would go, it would go to the department and, you know, we we figure out with counsel, like uh which, you know, uh. Uh the department you'd be writing the check to, but specifically, uh the same, I would imagine that uh the zoning board has. Uh a- and again, uh I understand the value of the sales tax and all that stuff, uh and and we appreciate you guys being here. Uh. They on and and we we believe that Mount Vernon has a very uh good intrinsic value in terms of its little kitchen, in terms of what it has to offer. And the other municipalities simply do not, uh you go next door to Pelham, you'll have a very hard time and they may not even have the space. Uh so we're very centrally located, we have a dense population, a lot of businesses here, and so it's very convenient, so we have a lot of worth and a lot of value. Uh so I'm not here to go back and forth and debate this, if you don't feel that there's any value in this, and you guys could certainly do what you need to do. Um we believe there is a lot of value if we are allowing you to operate in conditions that normally, under the code right now, would not allow you to operate as easily.
Okay, so I I guess I just want to clarify then, is there a specific dollar amount that that you're looking for, is that something we would work with staff on?
Sure, what I'm proposing, and the board would have to chime in on this, is ten percent of whatever uh 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 your build-out. Uh that you file with the building department is, so whatever you file in the building department is, your build-out cost, if their permit fees are based on that as well. Then we would use that number to calculate the ten percent.
Uh may I speak here for a second?
Sure.
Um the building department uh application fees and permit fees are about one percent. Um ten percent, uh if you had a million-dollar project, some, you'd be asking somebody for a hundred thousand dollars. I think you'd find them running to a different city to develop in, I think um. Uh. A small, um a way smaller percentage should be thought about and where, once again. And I don't, I, the trickle-down economics had to do with giving tax breaks to the rich because they would start businesses and send it down to the poor. Uh that's not what we're looking for as a tax break for the rich, we're asking for a waiver of a side yard to permit somebody to be in business. Who's actually going into business, not like the people that get the tax breaks from the Republicans, we're get, we're asking for. Somebody who's going in business, who's gonna have to hire people to rent his trucks, have to hire people to wash the trucks, maintain the property. This is not a trickle-down economy, this is real employment, this is what uh everybody wants.
So you, so Mr. Demore, so real employment, so are you saying that you would like us to condition the employment of the employees there to be a Mount Vernon residents?
No, I want you to be.
It's real employment, but it's not real employment for Mount Vernon citizens, if it's real employment for Palom citizens or New Rochelle, I really couldn't care and that is not why I sit on this board. So, you know, you have to be careful of what you say and and the economic benefits, so many different people have come before this board and other boards in Mount Vernon. And have made uh estimations of the economic uh, you know, benefits of of their projects that really never come to mature. Never, nine years I sat on this board and I haven't seen one, so please don't lecture me on that because I know the history here. So again, if you have a recommendation you'd like to make in terms of what you believe would be fair, that the board could deliberate and take a look at, I'm open to listen. Uh and and we, and so is the remaining uh members of the board, but if you don't, I say that we, you know. Table this uh this application and then the board will deliberate and and the board will speak, I'm one voice, but the board will make a decision.
Uh I would suggest three percent maximum.
It was, I guess that was the purpose of uh of uh Commissioners and Moore bringing it up, uh we we initially, that's why we asked counsel to see if there was a fee structure in place. So the ten percent wasn't a hard number, it just was a number that was 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 uh was mentioned, but we were discussing now on on that possible. Uh opportunity, so you know, once we, once we come back with a a s- a schedule or something, then. Uh you know, we can, we can table this for another time, but it wasn't a hard number, um that's what for the ten percent, so I I know you said a million dollars, a hundred thousand. That wasn't the case, we just were trying to figure out what would be the appropriate amount that we can potentially uh request.
I can agree with uh Commissioner Thompson on that, and also I want to add, uh Mr. Demore, that it all depends on the waivers, right? If the waiver is a couple of trees or maybe a minor setback, that's one thing, but if the waiver is from one uh one-story building to something more. Uh then maybe it 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 can uh scale up to ten percent, right, so it depends on the value of what the waiver is, so those are some of the things that we will deliberate on.
Uh I I got one more thought for you, the reason that the city, the reason that the zoning board charges only for one thing, which is when they give variances for parking spaces. Is it, is that the idea is they collect the money and eventually they'll have enough money to build a parking garage for the public good. You guys collecting money to give waivers is not the same thing because you're not.
Well, that that that's, that's, Mr. Demore, that's that's where you're where you're wrong in terms of the reason that we would be raising money is for the benefit of the public. Whether it would be a parking lot, whether it would be to help co- complete the comprehensive plan, whether it would be to uh. Uh enhance a a safety in in the major intersections, whatever the situation may be, it's going to be a benefit for the residents of the city of Mount Vernon. So whether it's it's zoning, whether it's planning, or whether it's any entity, um it's because it's for the benefit of the city as a whole.
Well, I I guess.
Thank you for, thank you for letting me know.
In the interest, in the interest of trying to to move things along, um again, I I, as I said, I wasn't prepared to. Offer specific uh or have a conversation about uh specific dollar amounts for, for, you know, in exchange for waivers. I think what I can feel comfortable telling you is um. That a a couple of things, one, in addition to if we were able to agree on a certain number, there are things that we've done in other communities, um any job listings are posted. If there's uh, you know, employment agencies or or city agencies that um that work with trying to find jobs for residents of Mount Vernon. We have done something similar in in New Haven, um and and certainly happy to do that, we do have um. Some some um uh grant um partners that we work with in terms of focusing mostly on a lot of youth and and uh food nutrition uh initiatives. That we're happy to do, and and I guess then it really just comes down to, you know, the specific dollar amount that that we're looking for, I guess my question would be. I i- if we were to agree on a dollar amount, is this something that would be a conditional approval for for the site plan? It would be conditioned upon?
I I don't see.
Well, I mean, if if there's a number that's agreed upon, then then it would be a condition of that money, yes.
Um could could we get a legal opinion uh from from counsel if the planning board is even allowed to uh? Charge fees without the city council, because I know the building department can't raise any fees, even uh two percent without.
I'll save you some time, uh if anything that we recommend uh or condition that we impose on you is deemed illegal or inappropriate by the council or any other legal entity of the city. And we, then we'll waive that and we'll go back to, you know, deliberating this without it.
And we can certainly adjourn the matter in order to. And I can report back more in more detail.
Well, uh if.
And 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 let me, let me try, let me try to interject, uh Mr. Um. More, understand something, that this board operates in accordance to all of the rules and regulations that is set forth before it. As well as it is well astute and knowledgeable of all of the um regulations, zoning laws, planning laws. And any of the other uh statutes that govern it, and so therefore, whatever actions that this board does ask um of you. Um you have the right, of course, to appeal that, but this is not the time nor the forum for that discussion to occur. As you have done before, you can always um make those appeals to myself as the commissioner, and should you not feel um accommodated. Um nor agree with my decision, you always have the 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 opportunity for you to take that to the mayor or to the city council. But this board right now is standing before you, making the recommendations that they see fit. Um to you, you either are going to accept them at this point or reject them at this point, and then they will go to the next level, and of course, due process will always be available to you. So I think that this, we have exhausted this particular issue at this time, and I will yield to the chair, but I think it's time to move on to the to the other issues.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, if I could ask one more question, just clarify, assuming if I were to make an offer, it's condition, uh a conditional approval based on the uh. The specific number, um we could always, we could always revisit if if there was some issue, if I'm not able to get that approval, would that be accurate? We would have to peer back in front of the planning board, is that correct?
I believe so, I mean, we can let the other board members launch hymen, but I believe so.
Okay, I I mean, in the interest of of just um, you know, trying to convey uh that we want to do business in Mount Vernon, we want to be a good neighbor. Um I can offer up to ten thousand dollars tonight um to to the planning board, anything beyond that, I'm not able to, I'm not able to do without. Having uh some consultation, which will take some time. Um what I, what I can offer in addition to that, as I spoke about, is again, if there's agencies, other agencies that uh are are important in the city. Uh particularly anything with youth or or food nutrition related, I I'm certainly happy to explore other opportunities as well, without being able to make any any commitments, obviously, but.
Petrie, without speaking to the board, uh but we will, their input, I believe that's fair based on the uh fact that uh this is the first you've heard of it since Mr. Demore or yourself were at the. Work session on Monday, so uh so that said, I think that eh eh you know, uh uh. Perfect, or good negotiations or fair negotiations are when people meet somewhere in the middle, so ten percent based on two hundred thousand would be twenty thousand, you're meeting in the middle. I think that's a very gentlemanly act of uh for you to uh put yourself out there right now at this moment, and so therefore, I would recommend. Uh that uh we move forward with this application and give conditional approval uh based on.
Is that, is that a motion, Commissioners and Moore?
Not a motion, it's actually. And uh I would, at this time, let the other.
And I'll just note, if the board wishes to vote on this, then we would take care of the secret aspect first and then.
Well, we have, we also have to have the public, if there's anyone here from the public speak in regards to this uh application.
You have a raised hand, you have a raised hand.
All right.
While that person is being elevated to a panelist, I'll just mention that the board received comments from the water department. Just water balances must be paid in full if applicable. The Vernon Board of Water Supply requires a backflow device to be installed on any and all commercial properties, that was discussed earlier. Demolition usually requires the cut and capping of water service at name, since only partial demolition work is to be done. And there is an existing one-inch. Service, we will allow the water to be turned off at curb line during demolition. All other water issues to be discussed at a later date, and we have no written comments, uh consents or objections from the public.
You have before you, I think, uh Dave was the hand that was raised, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner. Do we have? Dave, can you?
Yes, yes, can you hear me now?
We can, yes.
Okay, great, sorry, I've been having so much trouble and power in my area and I I lost half of the meeting and I I picked up the, on the part. That uh when you uh, there was a mention of a of a percentage of, I don't know what the percentage of, was it the construction cost, was it the permit cost? Uh and I apologize for that, but is there, is is there, is there like an impasse where uh somebody mentioned that there's got to, that they they recommending a fee to proceed? Can anybody hear me?
Okay. Yeah, I I we, I guess we were waiting to see whether you were talking in 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 favor of this particular application.
Okay. Uh, you know what, I I I am a contractor, can anybody, everybody hear me now, yes? Okay, and we have been in business for thirty years and we have been nothing more than sympathetic. Uh and we, we, our actions have speak volumes of how we work with the community. I have worked with a community work base, uh a base uh where we've employed local community labor, give these, given these people their union books, started them out as helpers and. I could, thirty guys I gave my, gave uh union books to in New York City, and this is my first venture into Mount Vernon. Uh although I've worked in many projects in the Bronx, uh large site work projects and uh.
Okay, Dave, can I interrupt you for one second, Dave? Can can, can you talk about your relationship to this, are are you involved with this application?
Yes, I'm the owner, I'm sorry.
Okay, tha- thank, thank you.
I'm sorry about that, I'm sorry, I am the owner.
Okay.
We are, I could, I could have somebody attend a meeting and they could testify, they could represent the fact that we've employed so much local. And I can't, I wish you could see my picture, but I can't get this thing to work, it's been, I've been, I have nothing but problems with this uh program tonight. And I'm really glad enough, I got an opportunity to present my case, which is. We'll use local contractors to do the work, if that helps, you know, local Mount Vernon contractors. Uh you know, contributing to the community has been always one of the uh priorities. Uh M B E, D B E, W B E, disadvantaged veterans, uh disabled veterans, we have complied. All the time with the with the requirements for mostly municipal contracts and uh I get it and I'm sympathetic to it and. And, uh, I get it, and I'm sympathetic to it, and more than sympathetic, we've been proactive in accomplishing, uh, and performing work, including the community in every one of our projects. So it's not like, you know, somebody's new to the neighborhood and they're coming in and they're, this is, this is, we're so sensitive to the needs of the community, and, and every, any reasonable common sense, uh, recommendation that's agreed to, I can assure you that, uh, we will participate as the contractor. And, uh, you know, John from Enterprise, he made an offer for a contribution tonight. I can make a similar, where's this money going, by the way? Can I, can I ask? I missed that part.
Sure, a- a- absolutely. This, this would go in, into, uh, an escrow fund that, that the, um, planning department would have.
Okay. Okay, so like I said, I've got local contractors, I'd be happy to engage to perform the work, and this way it goes back into the community. Does that make, does that make sense to you?
Um, I like that. I like, I like the fact that, uh, there were, you know, residents of the city would be involved in the trades with the, with the job. Sure.
Well, we've done that, and if you need, I could get letters, I could get people to interview. Uh, it's called Positive Workforce. They're located on 125th Street and Park Avenue in New York City. And, uh, uh, for 20 years I've been working with this group. And before that, I've been working with other local groups. And, uh, like I said, I understand, uh, where we are, what we're doing, and how to do it.
Alright, so John, what's on the table right now, uh, is whether we're going to review this application for, uh, and get a recommendation tonight, or postpone it to the next planning board meeting. So, uh, based on the discussions with Mr. Petrie, uh, we came to a consensus in terms of deliberating right now, uh, on that, uh, his offer, which would have up to roughly 5% of the, uh, of the, uh, approximate construction cost basis that the more, uh, believe that this would be. Now, it could be more, but we're gonna work off the 200 number. Uh, now, on top of that, the things that you just mentioned, yes, we, we believe that would be, uh, the things that are commensurate with being a good community member, and which I believe, based on your history here, you, you claim that you are, and I'll take you at your word for that. So we would love to have that done in addition. But right now, this, uh, the fee, uh, that we're speaking of is so that we can move along plans, uh, for development in the city, uh, such as local plans, traffic plans, and a, and a whole lot of other things that we would like to have in this city to encourage, that we currently don't have. And so that's where the fee is going to go. It's not gonna go, uh, towards, you know, uh, uh, festivals in the streets and stuff like that. That's the worst planning board. In nine years I've been on this board, we haven't planned anything. And I believe that has hurt Mount Vernon, so we're trying to actually help and encourage, uh, an environment that's.
If, if I could say one other thing of recent memory, I donated to a charity in, in Patterson, New Jersey, that, uh, turns, uh, is a re, is, is basically a, uh, a halfway house for, uh, for, uh, for prisoners that have, have, are trying to come out of, come out of jail and make something of their lives. And, you know, all this stuff I could substantiate, I could even prepare for the record, if you'd like to see how much we always have participated, uh, in the, in the communities we work.
Again, sir, I, I'll take you at your word for that, and, uh, and I appreciate that, and we appreciate you.
Yes, great, great. And we appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you.
Great.
So if, uh, if.
We'd love to get a vote tonight.
Okay.
I'm sure we'd all would love to get a vote tonight and move on. This, this, I can't tell you how long we've been carrying the cost of this property.
We're trying to let us.
Okay. Alright, we, we, we still have to see if there's anybody else, um, from the public that would like to speak in regards to this application. Commissioner, deputy commissioner. Thank, thank, thank you very much.
Doesn't appear, doesn't appear to be anyone else.
Okay, okay. Um, Frank, Commissioner Trolley, would you like to talk about the granite curbs?
Um, can you hear me?
Yep.
Well, uh, the architect had mentioned already that the, uh, the sidewalks were already completed. So what's there now, Ted? Is it bluestone curbing?
I don't rec, I don't remember if there are.
Ted, may I interject? May I interject? What we did is we secured permits from the, from the, uh, from the, from the city. We did secure permits from the city, and we took the existing curbs, and having the experience we do, we, we turned them upside down. So they were worn where they were worn, and they were basically in earth. We, 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 we turned them upside down, so you've got basically the new, the new side of the curve. We turned them upside down, and we reinstalled them.
Right, they were the bluestone curbing, right?
The bluestone curbing, yes, but in sections.
Yeah, okay. Well, I wouldn't, yeah, I mean, if, i- i- if it was, you were doing it now, I would suggest changing them to granite curbing, but I wouldn't.
But, but we did, we did follow the, the, we did follow the directive from the highway department.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but, uh.
Yes, we worked with them every step of the way, got unexpected, got the permits.
They're done now, so.
Expected, yeah.
Maybe you could put in street trees, though, that, that would help out.
Uh huh. Anything that gets this thing, but I can assure you, like I said, we took the appropriate permits and, and worked under their guidance and.
We might have to, uh, downgrade you, uh, and remove you as a participant, so that we can.
I'm sorry, you want me to downgrade me then? Sorry. Bye bye, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So, so, uh, Commissioner, uh, regarding the street trees, uh, I believe, uh, Mr. Demore said that they have a, a, uh, a sign there that they would like to put them, and that's why they didn't, uh, uh, they didn't, uh, care to have too many street trees to kind of hide. But Mr. Demore, uh, it could, i- is it possible that if you had one tree to the left, tree to the right of the entrance, and you could still have your signage, uh, unimpeded?
Uh, could I put it in the corner to the, uh, left of the entrance?
You know what? You can put two trees on the, uh, my recommendation would be that you can put two trees anywhere you want on the street side of the, of the site.
We can do that.
Okay, uh, if that's, I can answer you, Frank?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I, I know we wanted to get back to this point and regarding the, uh, traffic, uh, Mr. Demore, I, I don't think we spoke about that.
Um.
I know he's, I know he was about to bring it up previously, and then we, uh, we actually moved on, but I know, uh, if you can, uh, talk to that point for us.
Yeah, before you do, Ted, before you do, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thompson, I believe Mr. Petrie, uh, mentioned that, uh, the, the, the site would not get that type of traffic because they are using it for long-term, it would not be a daily rental.
Got you.
Okay, so I believe that topic may have been covered.
That's what I was gonna say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments from any other commissioners?
Counsel, any, any comments?
I can run through part two of the SECRAS when you're ready.
Okay, please.
The planning seminar report lists that the planning board is the only agency that needs to vote or approve this matter. So if you will take a, a quick vote, you can declare the planning board, and there, there are no other interested or involved agencies. If you'd like to vote to declare the planning board's intention service lead agency.
No, okay, make a motion that the planning board serve as lead agency.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that passes unanimously.
And the applicant submitted a short environmental assessment form, so we'll do part two of the short assessment form, has 11 questions. And these questions are for the board. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Can either say no, small impact, or moderate to large impact?
I would say no.
Okay.
No.
Two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use intensity of use of land? No to small or moderate to large?
I would say no.
No.
Three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Yeah, no.
Four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No.
Six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
Uh, well, you know, uh, let me ask you, Juan, Ted, uh, I, I mean, I, I believe all your lighting is, uh, uh, LED possibly right now, and I mean, you're, there is an opportunity to put some solar stuff through, I'm not sure if you guys explored that, uh, that's totally up to you, but, uh, just something for you to, but I would say, counsel, uh, that to answer your question, uh, can you read your question one more time? Is it in the negative or the positive?
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy?
No.
And fail to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? If there are any energy conserving measures?
W- w- that's what I just mentioned regarding the solar panels or anything like that, uh, but, uh, that is, uh, small thing, uh, and I would, uh, I would just say no. Because the savings, the savings may not warrant it, is, is what I mean by that. Uh, they don't really have a large energy, eh, energy draw, uh, so therefore, uh, by the time you put the solar panels, I don't believe that the, uh, that the payoff is, would be there.
Number seven. Seven, will the proposed action impact existing A, public or private water supplies?
No.
Or B, public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Number eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Wait a minute, is this on a African-American bill, so?
I'm kidding, no, no.
Number nine. The proposed action results in an adverse change to natural resources, e.g. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna?
No.
Ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No, I believe those have been addressed properly.
And finally, eleven, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
No.
Okay, that completes part two of the SECRAS review.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
So.
Alright, um, any more questions, commissioners?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Last question, just for part three.
Yep.
If the board would vote, I will check this box if the board has determined that based on the information and analysis above and supporting documentation, the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact. If that is the case, the board can vote to make that determination.
No.
Significant adverse environmental impact.
No, no.
Well, you have a motion? A motion, a second, and a vote?
Uh, this motion is on, uh, the, uh, the SECRAS?
Secret determination, final secret determination based on your analysis.
Right, so the motion is to, uh, is, uh, to, uh, the determination will, uh, no, it, they have no effect, uh, no secret effect?
There's no, no significant adverse environmental impact.
Right, okay, I would make a motion, uh, that this application has no negative or environmental, uh, impact, uh, in regards to the, uh, New York State, uh, Environmental Equality, uh, Review Act.
Second.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. SECRAS is taken care of. Alright, is there a motion on the application?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to recommend, uh, the approval of this application based on the condition that the, uh, board has come, uh, together with, uh, Mr. Petrie regarding a, uh, a fee, uh, of $10,000, uh, or no greater than, uh, five percent of the cost of the improvements of the property. So therefore, Mr. Petrie, if the improvements are, are, are less than, uh, 200,000, uh, then the 5% should carry, and you will actually be paying less. Alright?
Understood, thank you.
Okay, uh, and also, uh, the condition that, uh, you add two street trees, uh, to the sidewalk, uh, side of the property, uh, one to the left and right of the, uh, entrance, uh, anywhere, y- you know, uh, that you, uh, so please. And I believe that those are the two that I'm catching now. Any other commissioners want to chime in on, on a condition?
I can read what I've noticed noted so far.
Okay, please do, counsel.
I have a total of five. One, backflow prevention device will be installed as required.
Yes.
Two, a full wrought iron fence would be, I, I didn't get the location for that.
Well, that is on the street side as, uh, the, on the rendering, but not on the plan. So the plans would be corrected to a wrought iron, uh, 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 black aluminum type of fencing there, uh, on the, uh, street frontage of the property, the Columbus Avenue frontage. And that any chain link, uh, fence on the property, if they, I don't believe they're inclined to put anybody, because they, they have some fences right now that they said belongs to the other property, uh, the watering properties, but if they do, then that would be subject to being a black chain link fence type on the back or the sidewalk.
Okay.
We, we, we don't, uh, uh, seek to approve, uh, chain link fences at all, but if we do, because it's on the rear of a property, then we typically, uh.
I've noted.
No problem with that. It's a good idea.
Three, three, you've mentioned already, applicant shall deposit up to 5% of the approximate construction costs, up to 10,000 in an escrow account. Planning department, planning department, planning department escrow account, or for planning purposes, to be used for planning, city planning purposes.
Correct.
Four, applicant will use local contractors to the extent possible.
To the extent possible, correct.
And the final one you mentioned, uh, applicant will plant two street trees anywhere on the street side of the site.
Uh, yes, and actually there is one more, Mr. Petrie, say that, uh, he would reach out to, uh, uh, the youth, uh, bureau and other, uh, 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 other, uh, social, uh, networks in Mount Vernon to help out in, in, in those areas, uh, in, in terms of whatever program that LRAT has, uh, that may benefit the city. that may benefit the city. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Can I, can I get one clarification? Uh, the two street trees, instead of putting them on the sidewalk, we want to put them inside of our wrought iron fence in our planter area. So they will cast shade onto the street, but they won't take away from people being able to see our full time. Is that accurate?
You want, you, 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 uh, trying to develop some type of tree stage, uh, or street state, I should say, but, uh, this, I will go along with that, uh, if you agree also to fill in your triangle at one point.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, so basically, counsel, uh, that these three trees are being planted and of course, uh, any comment, I'd like the commissioners to agree on that. Uh, uh, commissioners, would, uh, would everyone agree to, uh, with, with the trees being planted on the inside of the fence, uh, that would still, you know, cast, uh, some type of, uh, uh, street scene, uh, but also fill in the triangle on the last, next to the last parking space at the front entrance? And make that, uh, also a planting bed, a possible tree or any type of shrubberies?
Yes.
I agree with that.
I, I agree, but also because I think not too far from where that property is, I believe there's a, um, bus stop there. So I'm not really sure, um, how much space it would have been on the street. You know? Am I correct? How far is a bus stop from that entrance?
It's also easier to maintain.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, so we're all in agreement there, uh, that would be the condition, uh, counsel?
Yes, I, I just need a little clarification on that. On the sixth one about reaching out to the URA and other social networks.
Uh, so, Mr. Petrie, could you reiterate, uh, what your, uh, what your offer was on that regarding the youth, uh, you know, for the youth, for the youth?
Sure, we have some partnerships with various youth organizations, uh, we have some initiatives that focus on youth and nutrition programs, so, like I said, I'm happy to reach out to, um, any programs that the city may have in effort to see how we can, how we can partner with them to benefit this.
That sounds great, so they would seek to partner, uh, and I believe Commissioner Morton, uh, you used to be in the, you're correct?
Uh, the Recreation Department, uh, so there, there, yeah, there are some opportunities for either one of those, um, because they both kind of work together, so that's an opportunity.
All right, fantastic, so counsel, uh, Commissioner Morton could, you know, could, uh, clarify and, um, Mr. Petrie on that. Uh, for our purposes right now, uh, we propose.
Okay, so applicant will reach out to the City Recreation Department and UPRO to see how they can partner with the city. And will report their plan back to the Planning Department.
Right. Correct.
Okay. Okay, I have the conditions, thank you.
So, well, I believe the motion's.
Okay, so there, you have the motion, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Petrie, Mr. Demora, good luck with your project, uh, we welcome you guys to Mount Vernon and, uh, it's a fine looking project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, next on our list. Item number four, four point one, case number one dash two zero two zero. Um, if you could remove, uh, Mr. Demora, please. Uh, Twenty Fourth Summit Avenue, section one sixty nine point six four, block twenty fifty eight, lot one, located in the RMF six point seven five zoning district. The applicant Christopher Smith, represented by Errol McIntosh, R.A., seeks to subdivide one vacant lot into two lots for the purpose of constructing two new fam, two, new two family dwellings. The applicant seeks subdivision approval. Secret determination, the enlisted action is a coordinated review. The planning board as lead agency must issue a secret determination prior to rendering any decisions.
Mr. Chairman, before you proceed, I'm just going to listen, I'm going to probably drop off shortly.
Okay.
And so I'm sure you're, you're in good hands with, uh, Niketji and, uh, they, they can answer any questions about the plan, about the rules that we discussed and why we are proposing those changes, should the committee have any of those, but, uh, have a good evening and if you need anything from me, you know where I am.
Thank you, thank, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Deputy Commissioner Melina, is the applicant or architect present?
Yes, uh, Mr. McIntosh actually has been promoted to panelist.
Okay.
Yes, I'm Errol McIntosh, you are hearing me?
Yes, we hear you, Mr. McIntosh.
It's a present, we, we have a subdivision, as, as a right subdivision on an existing lot, fourteen thousand square feet, and we have subdivided them into two different, two se, seven thousand square feet lot, as of right, there are no variances, and we're basically want to get this done to build two new two family houses.
Okay, quite, question for you, Mr. McIntosh, in, in the basement on, on both of these units, is it a half bath or full bathroom?
Uh, maybe look at the plan. Uh, it's a, it's a full bathroom.
Okay, is there a separate entrance into the, into the basement?
Uh, we have, it's directly accessible from above. Hold on a second, let me answer that question. Yes, there's a separate access.
Okay.
But this is an, is an enforcement issue.
I'm sorry?
This is an enforcement issue, I mean, I, I, what, what are you implying?
What am I implying? You have a, you, you have a separate en- entrance into, into the basement. Um, you have a full bathroom down there, how many bathrooms are on the, on the, on the main level, on the main two levels?
Let me just. Which one, which one of the houses you talk, okay, uh, let me see. Actually, it's a half a bath, I'm sorry.
It's a half bathroom, okay. Okay. Thank you.
So half about access to the director from the garage.
Okay.
And we have an access from the outside, this is fine.
Okay. Okay, I just, the, the bathroom was more, was more concerning. Uh, because what we're, what we're doing is there used to be a, a three family there, they had the fire, you're taking it down, and as a right putting two, two, two families there. So a concern would be if there would be a third unit, um, causing, you know, greater congestion in the area. Um, and, uh, so I just wanted to know what the intentions were and based on the fact that you have the half bath, the intentions would be for that, for that main unit to use that basement for the, for the owner, correct?
Yes, it's, it's directly accessible from the garage, I don't see how this could be rented.
Okay, so question, thank you, and, and you answered it, thank you. Okay, continue.
Basically, we have as a right lots, we are not asking for any variance and we're asking for, for full this subdivision.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
The front end and Sydney and, and Sydney and Summit.
Is your, is your driveway with no setback as of right, Mr. McIntosh?
Yeah, everything as of right, everything that we're doing, all variances, there's not, nothing to be asking for.
Are, are you aware of the city code that you need a three foot setback on your driveway from the lot?
Three foot setback on the city code for three foot setback. I have my, I have my site plan, I don't see where you're talking about three foot setback, I'm.
Your driveway, I believe that's on Summit.
Looking at my site plan. Where, where the three foot setback, I have, uh.
You don't have one, you need one.
Three foot setback, oh.
Your driveway is on the property line.
What?
We have to show the driveway on the property line, when you, we have to cross the sidewalk.
Uh,
I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to six feet. On the proposed driveway, I don't understand why it's setback, what, a driveway, I have to have a curb cut.
Not talking about that.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I, I did.
Thank you, counsel.
I did look up that information with, uh, the Buildings Department after Monday's work session.
Mm-hmm.
Mentioned that this was a subdivision plan as opposed to a site plan, so it might not have had that detail, but they did confirm that there must, for a driveway, there must be a minimum three foot setback from the property line, plus the driveway must be a minimum of nine feet wide. And the subdivision plan did show a twelve foot area for the driveway. So they said enough space does exist for code, and it would, at the time of building permit is when they would enforce those regulations. But the, the subdivision plan as shown was satisfactory to the Building Department.
Thank, thank you, counsel.
You see, Mr. McIntosh, we could all learn something.
Okay.
All right, uh, Commissioner Trolley, you had a question regarding something on this property, I remember, I'm trying to recall what the question was.
Well, I was just referring to, uh, the sidewalks, uh, we are going to make them more, uh, concrete, correct?
Yes, I, I mean, I mean.
Granite curbing, Mr. McIntosh, what's your plan for the sidewalks?
You're going to have to put a new sidewalk in, it's required by law. They can't finish the building without a sidewalk.
We understand it's going to be a sidewalk, we asking what's your plan for the sidewalk, is it going to be blue stones, concrete, that's what we're asking.
It'll be a concrete sidewalk and with, 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 um, curbs.
Granite curbs?
Yeah, well, I wouldn't say granite curb, I would say concrete curbs, based on what has been used, our bluestone curb.
All right.
So, our recommendation is for granite curbs, uh, do you, are you opposed to that?
I'm not, no, I'm not opposed to, I, I'm not opposed to granite curbs.
Okay, good, I think it's durable and long term would benefit everyone, including the city and the, uh, and the future homeowners. Okay, great.
Well, what, what, what we have to look at is the existing curbs that are there, and you have to join, you are joining property with the curb that you are adding. So if there's a bluestone curb there, it would be hard to join it with a granite curb.
Well, if there's a bluestone curb there, I would then submit, based on your reasoning and rationale, that would be hard to join it with a concrete curb. So since we are in, 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 you know, materials in Mount Vernon currently are very incongruous, uh, they, they change from property to property, from street to street, uh, in an effort, uh, to, uh, to look into the future and planning the city, uh, we find here that the board that, uh, the granite curbs are in, uh, everyone's benefit, and if you're not opposed to it, then we would recommend that and we could move forward with this application.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not objecting to it, but there's also a logical sequence of things.
Right, but as I just, you know, presented to you that, uh, if, if it's a logical sequence of things, if it happens to be bluestone, but you're proposing, uh, concrete, then that would, uh, be illogical, so we're gonna, we're gonna be a, a little bit, well, possibly, but, uh, uh, we're gonna, uh, on the side of granite right now.
Okay.
Okay. Great, so, uh, I rest, I don't have any more, uh, I don't have more questions.
Okay, um, counsel, is, is there any correspondence from any city agency, anything?
Let me take a look.
Thank you.
Uh, um, Jessica, Mr. McIntosh, you sent, um, myself and Deputy Commissioner, uh, Melina, uh, gets, uh, some drawings or something, um, that I don't, and I stated to you that, I guess if you needed to present them, that you should, would be able to share your screen, do you need, are you, are you needing to do that?
I, I don't think so. No. Unless you want me to do it.
No, it's not up to me, it's up to the board.
Okay, what, what, what was it that was, was shared?
We do floor plans and elevations, basically.
Oh, you had elevations? I'd love to see those.
If you could share them out, that, it would be appreciated, thank you.
All right, sure.
In the interim, counsel, was there anything? Have you found anything?
Sydney Avenue, Sydney Avenue elevation.
Yes. They're showing a record of two consents from the public for the project and one objection for the project. The issue is, it looks like one one affected property owner submitted both, uh, consent and objection. Just for the record, I'll note it. Also comments from the County Department. We received this referral, but it is not under the County Planning Board's jurisdiction. So this is within the City Planning Board's purview. Fire Department. Fire Department has no objection to the applicants as long as the New York State Fire and Building Codes are followed and necessary permits are granted. And finally, from the Building Department, the undersigned has reviewed the attached report regarding Twenty Fourth Summit Avenue. This project, I'm sorry, this is from Department of Public Safety, the Police Department. This project for two, two family houses, the Department of Public Safety has no objections currently. And those complete the comments.
Okay, thank, thank you, counsel.
I have another comment, uh, what is our pro, present for parking, uh, for requirements for two family residents? I know, for example, in U L Shell, uh, it, it requires for four cars and they cannot be in line, they would have to be, uh, side by side, like, uh, two cars, uh, side by side, so, you know, so two for one family, one in front of the other and two for another family in front of the other. Do you have any code requirements for, uh, parking for two family houses?
Two cars in a garage, two cars for two family inside the garage.
Two cars and two cars in the garage, okay, and you have that, do you have two cars?
I have two cars in the garage.
Yeah. Thanks for that clarification.
If the applicant is still looking to show, I can go through SECR, if you wish.
Sure.
Like to. The Plan Examiner's report shows that the Planning Board is the only agency that has to approve, review and approve this project. There are no other interested or involved agencies. Applicants submitted a short environmental form, so we'll go through the same eleven questions. If you'd like. I, I see the screen at the beginning, would you like to?
Go see the screen?
Yes, would, would you like to finish reviewing the project before handling SECR?
Yes.
You're gonna need to change the share screen. You're gonna have to go back and get the other screen with the picture on it.
This one?
Yeah, go back to share screen.
Okay.
Hit the share screen and then hit the one that you wanna show.
Okay. One that, okay, I see what you're saying. What do you see? You wanna see the front elevation or you wanna see the side?
Let's start with the side.
Okay.
Perhaps we could go through CECL in the meantime.
Okay.
What do you say, Chair?
Yes, if we're having technical difficulties, absolutely.
Okay.
Or even perhaps the subdivision checklist for the record that we went through during the work session.
Yes.
And Mr. McIntosh, you can also chime in. So the first issue is regarding drainage. Will drainage be retained on the site? If we retain on the site, I think the plan showed two dry wells.
Mr. McIntosh, why don't you, uh, speak to that, uh, regarding the?
All, all the driveways are, yes, all drainage is gonna maintain on the site.
Thank you.
Circulation. The condition of the sidewalk and pedestrian access.
Available, available and with their sidewalk according to city code.
Okay, replacing.
One hundred percent will be replaced, uh, which, okay, great. And we, we could.
Reinstate one, granted.
And we could, uh, bring that up in the conditions.
Building layouts, does the building layout meet zoning code? That was yes, there are buildable lots as of right. Structures, fences and retaining walls are located appropriately.
We don't have any retaining walls, they're not, they're not necessary, it's slightly split flat. Fences will be according to the code.
You have something on the property, Mr. McIntosh?
Yeah, the fencing will be around the property according to the code, yes.
Okay, so what type of fencing are you planning?
Stucked chaining fence.
Sorry?
Stucked chaining fence.
Did you say chain links?
Stucked, yes.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, um, we'd like to see, uh, wrought iron-like aluminum-type fencing, not chain link.
Okay.
We can condition that if you would, uh?
We'll do that.
Okay, great.
Okay.
So are you capturing those conditions, by the way?
Yes.
Thank you.
Landscaping, will street trees be preserved? Will street trees be planted?
We will plant street trees, there are no street trees to be preserved.
Okay, are those noted on the plan, Mr. McIntosh?
That will be shown on the plus.
Sorry?
We will provide street trees.
Right, are they shown on the plan?
Let me see if I have them on the plan. No, we, we, we did not, we were just focusing on the subdivision.
Do you have an idea of where, how many and where?
I will, we will put street trees every, every, every twenty-five feet.
I'm sorry?
Every twenty-five feet, we will put trees, street trees.
So, can we agree to want two on Summit and two on, uh, what was it, East Sydney?
Yes.
Okay, good. So we can condition that, Council?
Yes. And is there adequate landscaping on the site?
Yep, yes, there was adequate landscaping on the site.
Lighting, will lighting be retained on the site?
On lighting would be non-offensive type of lighting on the building. On the side, it's, it's a residential neighborhood, you can't, uh, adequate lighting will be provided.
So, so basically, Mr. McIntosh, are you testing that, uh, there will be no forward-facing lighting on the prop, on the, uh, structures?
That's right, we're not gonna, yes.
Okay. That, that could be a condition.
Okay. Density, does the proposed project set a precedent for density in the neighborhood?
I'm sorry, by the way, Council, uh, on the lighting, that would be forward-facing or upward-facing? Uh, so basically only downward-facing, uh, lighting, uh, or, or, uh, or non-directional lighting?
Non-directional lighting.
For the structures, okay, I'm with you.
Okay. And density. The board comfortable that the density proposed would not set a precedent in the neighborhood? Is it an appropriate density for this neighborhood?
Well, it will, but it says of right, that's part of our code now, so nothing we can really do about that. We'd have to change the code if we, uh, have a problem with density type. Which I generally do, but, uh, again, he's building it according to our code, so that's what we got.
Just a few more categories, infrastructure slash public services, is there, will there be a significant impact on infrastructure?
No, not, no, not at all. The infrastructure is, all infrastructure is there.
I tend to agree.
And public services, emergency?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, screening slash buffers, there adequate screening between properties?
Yes, there will be adequate screening between properties.
I don't believe so, uh, I will disagree, uh, but, uh, we could condition that. Because right now, the way you have it on the plan, I don't see any adequate screening, uh, between the two lots. But, uh, now that you will make your driveway nine feet instead of twelve and you'll have that three feet, uh, of space, you could add, uh, proper screening. So I believe you have the room to do so, uh, and we could condition that you do so.
Okay. Grading, is there appropriate grading?
Side is relatively flat and it would be graded, uh, in accordance with the code.
I agree.
And the last. Okay, that, that would be all. That, that's, that actually completes that. Thank you.
Do we need a, a vote on that?
No, no, that's fine, it would just help with the write-up of the final resolution.
Okay, great. All right, which brings us to the elevation. I saw it briefly on the screen. So I believe you had it there.
Yeah, I took control and I had it, so hold on, I'll get it back up there for you.
Okay. Okay. Very funny picture window. All right, uh, it's a lot of steps there.
It's not, it's not a lot of steps.
Was it? I can't hear you, Mr. McIntosh.
It scares that, uh, they're not, you're, you're looking at the, um, the masonry base.
I, I, I'm sorry, I can't make you, uh, what you're saying.
You're looking at the masonry base, there's not a lot of steps.
Okay. So... Okay, I can't enlarge my screen, but you're saying that's, uh, oh, it's a wall.
It's a wall, right.
Okay, that's a wall. All right, all right, I got you. And, uh, that's your handrail. So what's your elevation there from, uh, from the grade to the front, to the front door?
From the grade to the front door. I'll give you in a minute. That's about, let me see. That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine rises. Nine, seven, six, three, that's five, five foot, five, say, five foot three from the, from the ground, from grade.
Okay, all right, uh, that's, uh, that's okay, so ten steps, nine risers, ten steps, oh. I mean, that's a considerable amount of steps, uh, but, uh, all right, no worries, all right, that's, I'm good there. I guess this is gonna go to ARB, so they'll deal with your odd picture window. All right, uh, and how about a side elevation?
Side elevation.
I'm actually more interested in the garage side, if you don't mind.
Garage side.
That's a different. The garage doesn't front on the street. Garage is on the front of the street?
Doesn't front the street.
Right, so you have elevation on the, the garage entrance side?
Yes.
Right.
So, Mr. McIntosh, which, um, drawing is that?
That's, that's.
What's it, what's the label on the drawing that I have to find?
Elevation, that's the east elevation.
I'm sorry, which one?
That's your east elevation.
Your east elevation, okay.
Do you see that?
We have it.
Can you see that?
Yes, I see that. I don't see a garage, though.
No, that's not the garage side.
Okay, well, which one? Huh?
I'm getting you to the garage side.
Okay, because that was the side east elevation, so which one is it? Is it the side west?
Um, hold on a second, hold on a second. My side.
Because I sent it to them.
Okay, that's your.
This is it, yeah, that's the line.
Uh-huh, okay, you got it.
This is the garage.
That's a great, mm-hmm. So, uh, so your grade's going down, uh, you're pitching down, so, uh, you're collecting the water, uh, where? At the, uh, at the bottom, towards the, the, towards the garage?
Well, yes, yeah, I, I, I resolve all my drainage issues. I mean, my drain is not, because, yeah. I'm, I'm, my drain is fine.
I asked you a question, I was asking whether you, you're, you're going to.
I'm solving the drainage problem, I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm gonna put drains, trench drains at the garage door, tie into the drywall.
Okay, great. All right, that's good. Uh-huh. Okay, and then, and how about the other property? Uh, this is the, the Summit, or is this the Sydney?
This one.
This is Sydney, you have the Summit property?
Yeah.
Going to that now.
Will you be tying the, uh, the leaders into the, uh?
All the leaders on the trench drains are gonna be tied to the drywall.
Thank you.
I don't drain on the sidewalk, I never do.
Okay, that's great.
Is there something else that is being shown, needs to be shown?
Yes. Looking for the
on Sid, Sid Avenue, uh, ones.
Elevation and garage side elevation.
You have to tell me what, which drawing that is, uh, Mr. McIntosh.
He wants to see the, um, front elevation, which is.
The west elevation is Summit side. West elevation on the Summit side.
The west elevation.
And you see Summit, front west Summit.
I think you probably need to go into a different file folder. You should have a, a folder for Summit separately, correct?
Yeah. I don't know, the drawings are, are lumped up together, I don't know.
I don't, I don't see that. You, so you sent those to us as well?
Yes.
Is that on a different file?
No, the same.
Thank you, I got Sydney Avenue's here.
Are these, are both these, uh, structures on brick, uh, face? McIntosh, all right, how are these, uh, how are these structures faced? Is it brick on all sides or is it combination?
It's a combination, not everything is brick.
Could you elaborate?
I, 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 I wasn't expecting to elaborate on, on, on this.
Is that a difficult question for you?
I was just talking to you, you know, because I, I was expecting that on the ARB report, yeah.
I understand, is that a difficult question for you?
Unfortunately, Mr. McIntosh, all I have is Sydney Avenue, it looks like, on the, on the emails that you sent.
No, okay.
Are they similar, the both homes?
Yeah, they are similar, but, uh, they're different elevations, you know.
Right, I, 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 I could have. Besides brick, what other material are you, are you, uh, having on the, on the structure?
What do you think?
All right, in case you're wondering, Mr. McIntosh, where I'm going with this is, uh, neighborhood is within our purview and depending on, you know, the, the, uh, visual impact of the home, uh, size, mass, uh, physical attributes, uh, they do render, uh, they do render cause for, uh, territory of the neighborhood interpretation, so that's why I'm asking.
Okay, so, Mr. McIntosh, what's the name of the file? Sydney Avenue what?
They all say Sydney.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I see them, they all say Sydney, but then they all have something after them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sydney Avenue, which one are we looking at?
One A.
Mm-hmm.
And then you have one that says one. So, I'm looking at the...
For the rear elevation? Are we looking for the rear elevation or the side? Which one?
Wants the, the other house...
Is the west?
Side, for the front, for the, for the other house.
Right, for Sydney.
Summit.
We, we want summit.
Oh, you want summit, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't see summit on the, in these files.
The files all say Sydney on top, that's what it is.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Files in minutes. Okay, let me look at the email that I sent you. Okay, so, 'cause I have a going for this. The one that you're looking for is gonna say... Sydney, one A. Front elevation, O one A.
Sydney, O one A, mm-hmm.
That's the front elevation for the other house.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know.
And then the door, for the garage, is... One A, side elevation, Sydney Avenue, side elevation, one A.
And this is the front?
You're looking at the front now. Two entrances.
This is the same property, we're looking for summit, no?
This is on...
Is this Sydney? We did this one already.
You don't see this one?
No, that one doesn't have that odd window.
It, the other one have the hard window.
So, Sydney Avenue, one A, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
See, I'm looking at it, uh, in plan here, but I don't see it there. I'm looking at this elevation here, and I can't find it.
That's the other, that's the other...
Here it is.
Got it. Did you find it?
Yeah.
This one, okay, she, this is what she did, she did Sydney. Okay, they want summit. That's she did, that's how she did it.
The garage is on the side.
And this is... This is the... And this is the other one.
That's it, right?
Yeah.
That's the other house, yeah.
Yes.
But what happened, that, it wraps around, so Sydney to summit.
Yeah, I understand.
That house is this one.
Sydney and summit, yeah.
Sydney and summit, and then the garage is on the side, then you have the one that's, how it's only one here. It's one of... That's why we have it like that. You get it?
Yeah, I got it.
So, the one with the two doors is only Sydney, which is one A, and then this is one, because it have two entrance, it has the...
Are you all seeing it on the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's Sydney, that's Sydney Avenue.
On this property, you have two doors in the front, uh, in the other property on, uh...
Summit and Sydney.
Yeah, this says Sydney, but I believe this is summit, but whatever.
Summit and Sydney, the corner Sydney and summit.
So there's two entrances.
One to the summit side, and one to the Sydney side.
Right, the other property we just saw, this is the Sydney side, right?
Yes.
Right, so you have one inch, one front door here on the summit side, you have two front doors. Are you, uh, do you have a vestibule in the other one with two doors leading to the, two separate, uh, home entrances?
Yeah, there are two, there are two, yeah, one, there's no separate vestibule, is it? You go straight into the, the apartment, and there's a vestibule, you go up this here, a separate, a separate door to the second floor. You have a foyer on both sides.
Right, so, so, in the, in the Sydney Avenue one, you have a, a single exterior door that leads into some type of vestibule with a staircase that leads up to the second story with a separate door and a downstairs with a separate door, correct?
Yes.
While the Summit Avenue side, you have two, uh, front exterior entrances, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
The summit side, yes.
Right, this one is on the, and this is Sydney.
One, would you say is more consistent with the neighborhood? Uh, I could take a look at some of your pictures of the other homes there, uh, do the other homes are typically single entrance door with the vestibule, or the separate entrance doors?
Some of the houses have separate entrance doors, some have, you know, they are, some of them have big open por- big porches, and you go to one side, then you go to another side for an entry. I have the pictures.
Yeah, I'm gonna go through your pictures right now. Alright, and how about the garage side, uh, Commish, you have that one?
I'll look for it.
Okay.
What's the, what is the, what's the file name, Mr. McIntosh, for the garage side, for, uh...
There's West, one A. West, West Summit elevation.
You have shingles here, and, uh, you have some brick on the, uh, patio side, and you have shingles.
Yes.
And, uh, the other house, uh, was primarily brick, okay?
And we know what the garage is. Sidewest elevation, one A. Sidewest elevation, one A.
So, Mr. McIntosh, uh...
He's the mark.
On this then?
Side, okay, he has it.
Okay, uh, so, based on the pictures that you submitted, every single home has a single entrance in the front, and I'm assuming if they're multi-families, that, uh, they would have a vestibule with, uh, with, uh, main entrances on the inside. The reason I asked, and I brought that up, is that, is the appearance it gives to the neighborhood. Does it appear to be a single-family neighborhood, or does it appear to be a multi-family neighborhood? That gives, you know, uh, some type of, uh, it gives people who are in the neighborhood a feeling that, you know, uh, it's a, it's a more, uh, a single-family unit type of neighborhood versus one where there's, uh, multiple families, um, they'd be more transparent.
There, there are two schools of thought on that, I don't, I, I'm not sure that, you know, if, if it's a two-family, I, I have two families, I can, I, I mean, I try to identify, give you a separate entrance for each family.
I understand, well, you did it one way in one house, and you did it another way on another house, right?
Yeah.
And, and so what I'm saying is, if I'm looking at the rest of the neighborhood, and I see the intent of, in the original intent of the development of the neighborhood, and I don't see a picture, by the way, of a house that burned down, but I would love to be able to see that as well, to judge from that, what type of it had. And so, trying to stay within the character of the neighborhood that it's, you're in right now, uh, and I would lean towards doing the single-door model, opening up into an interior vestibule.
Yeah, we can do that, I mean, we can do one door, I do, we can do a single door.
Okay, I would prefer that. So, council, uh, if the other commissioners don't have any objection to that, uh, if they would like to speak to that, uh, I wouldn't mind making that a condition.
And what is the condition?
That, uh, the, I believe it's the Summit Avenue, uh, residents, uh, have, or both residents actually, will have a single exterior door, uh, that opens to a, um, that will then contribute to each, to the, uh, other families, to the two residents.
Okay, you were going out a little bit, both residences shall have a single exterior door that opens into a vestibule.
Right, which would then consistently lead to, uh, incident of the...
That leads to the two...
And, so, in the case, so, yeah, so what he said is that they have a single outside door that would lead to a vestibule with the two, with the two doors for the entrances to the units.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, and, and you know, this is one of the things, uh, with, with our purview and character of the neighborhood, uh, that, uh, we typically, uh, we rarely exercise, because we don't get a lot of these, uh, but when we do, uh, we take a look at the neighborhood, and we look at the intent of the area, and, and we try to stay within that, uh, that kind of vibe.
Yeah, well, we're trying to give you, we give you, we're giving you porches, just like the other houses.
No, you are, you are, I'm speaking regarding the doors, not the porches.
So, Mr. McIntosh, both of these are two-family?
Two-family house, yes.
Not three-family, correct?
For the A R B?
I'm sorry, I have a question again, how do you enter the basement area?
The basement area is entered from... From, from the side.
Yes, Commissioner, uh, Jenga, he has a separate entrance for the basement that I believe would be, uh, occupied by the, uh, main floor, uh, homeowner occupants, correct?
Yes, that's correct, and there's an open stair from the, from the first floor to...
The basement.
The basement.
Right, so it would be the same occupant, it would not be a, uh, independent apartment?
No. It's directly accessible, there's an open stair from the living room to the basement.
Okay. So, like, sort of like a rec area type thing for the first floor?
And it can be closed, an open stair.
Got you, thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay, Mr. Chair, just so you know, you do have, uh, two hands that are raised...
Thank you.
For that, alright, so I'm gonna leave you in the hands of Marlene now, I'm really...
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're really leaving this time?
I'm really leaving this time. You, you know what, you don't pay me enough, Commissioner Zamora, to work that hard for you.
You, you can say the same. I'm agreeing on that.
Alright, have a good one.
Good night, Pastor.
Good night, thank you. Deputy Commissioner Melina, can we please have...
Yes, so we, we start with Marlene, wait a minute, let me promote the panelists, so, Marlene. By the way, there, there's also fourteen questions, but, um, there's a person named... Yes.
Okay, if nothing else, I deserve credit for perseverance, it's been three hours. You seem to have your direction with, with this matter, but I, I just feel I want to express myself anyway. Uh, I, I, I guess if you could just educate me also as to this thing about dividing properties and being able to put two buildings on them, is there no, are there no regulations or policy, or is it a case-by-case determination? I mean, that's one thing. Then, I drove down Summit today, and the houses on the street are old, large, and very grand. And this design, to me, is really out of the character for the neighborhood, as would be the wedging of two buildings into this lot. My preference would be for no more than two apartments, I think density is a big issue in Mount Vernon. However, if four apartments had to be, why not have a single, larger dwelling that would accommodate the four? And then each apartment would probably be a lot more spacious and desirable. That's it, thank you very much, and it's Marlene Worthheim at one hundred Sycamore Avenue, good night.
So, uh, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Marlene. Regarding the last question you had, in terms of one larger unit with a four, I'm not sure if this area is zoned for four families, is it?
You, you, you can't, you can't do that, you have to go for variance, because it would be...
Okay, so that's number one. Number two, I agree, uh, with Marlene there, that, uh, it's not my preference to, uh, if anyone knows my history of the way I've voted on this board and others, uh, is that I do not like the, like to increase the density in Mount Vernon. I am not in, uh, general, uh, in general, I'm not in, uh, favor of these, uh, subdivisions, where you have these single, large...
If you know the, if you know the history of this house, that was, it was a very large house, and it had about six families living in it.
I, I understand, Mr. McIntosh, thank you. Uh, so, uh, so anyway, I am not in generally, generally in favor of this, however, if it is the code that allows it, then, uh, then he has it as a right. Now, if, what we should do as, as a board, as, as all the land use boards and with city council, is we should move to change that, and, and to start restricting these, and, uh, to have more restrictive codes when it comes to this, because, you know, I kind of feel sometimes people are like, well, the house is kind of, you know, it's, it's old, uh, you know, instead of renovating it, what if, uh, we knock it down, demolish it, accidental fire, whatever, and then now let's build two new structures, make more money for four families? You know, so, so, if we change the code, I think, uh, it would be beneficial, and we would see less of that. So, right now, though we don't like it, uh, there's nothing really we could do to challenge it. Now, in terms of the design, I also am not in favor of it, I, I, actually, I dislike it a lot, uh, but that is, uh, up to the architectural review board to dig, uh, and do a deeper dive into that. I think for the planning board purposes, uh, in terms of character of the neighborhood and the intent, I think, uh, I did pick up one issue that we were, were able to, uh, make a change, uh, or recommend the change on. Uh, and so that is my comment to that, uh, regarding, uh, what else? I believe I spoke to all of your, to all of your questions, Marlene, is that correct? The density, the splitting of the lot, uh, the design of the homes, and whether it could be a four-family house? Uh, any other commissioner? No, I guess we covered it?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Leslie.
Any other speakers?
Yes, we have two more speakers. Uh, next speaker is gonna be Brian Conway. Next speaker is gonna be Brian Conway.
Yes, um, I have a question about that basement and the elevation for those stairs. That looks like a three-family house to me.
We don't have a three-family house. It's a two, two-family. There's no way it can be a three-family. There's no kitchens, there's no, there's two fixtures, and there's an open basement, open stair. Two, they, it's, it's impossible.
Well, just because it's open doesn't mean it can't be built in there.
Well, you know, that's up to the enforcement agents. We are not building a two, two-family, we're building a two-family house. I mean, there's, it, it's customary to have a basement in most of these houses. Um, you know.
Cause it looks like you started with a three-family house and then.
There's a lot of feedback.
It, it looks like you started with a three-family house and when you found out that the three-family house wasn't gonna work, you turned it into a two-family and left the plan for a three-family. If you look at those plans, that looks like every three-family house in the Bronx.
Design-wise, I would concur, uh, but, uh, Mr..
Design and arrangement is the same as use. I have a two, 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 two fixtures and an open basement. It's not, I, I, I can't see it. I mean, two boilers, two, uh, you know.
Right. I, I would concur with Mr. McIntosh that, uh, uh, based on the code, uh, and, uh, and the utilities in each of these residences that it's designed for a two-family. And, but I would also agree with you that it does look like every three-family, uh, uh, structure in the Bronx and, uh, the design is, uh, is not appealing, but, uh, that is going to be an architectural review board, uh, you know, uh, lift. Any other questions?
Uh, I guess not.
All right, thank you.
All right, Commissioner, uh, Melina?
Uh, next speaker is Michelle. The name is nineteen Summit on your screen, but it's Michelle. Go ahead, Michelle. You have to unmute yourself.
Hello, you can hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, thanks for letting us listen in. Um, I just wanted to find out, is Mr. L going to be living in one of the buildings, one of the houses?
No.
That was a negative.
That was no.
Brian, I can't hear.
I know.
What did he say? What was the answer?
No, I, no.
Have you heard, uh, volume, uh, to be, um?
Michelle, do you have any other questions?
I'm trying to get back in.
Can you hear us?
We can still hear you.
No, I'm having a problem. I'm down to four percent. So I'm thinking that's why my phone is acting weird. Um, I had a couple more questions, but I guess it's okay. I, I got a lot.
Ask your questions, we can hear you.
Um, so, what did you say? Was Mr. L going to be living in one of these houses? You said that's a negative?
Yes.
Okay, and my next question is why so many stairs? We don't live on a hill. If you, if you drive down Summit Avenue, the houses are pretty. There's no hill where you have to walk upstairs. So this house has like tons of stairs. Why did you think about putting those, that many stairs, uh, in that particular house?
Uh, it's, it's, it's a, it's a way we look at it. I mean, there, there's a basement level, there's a lower level that we have and, you know, we need steps to go to the upper level.
So basically.
We're, we're trying to meet the building codes by doing that. That's what we do to meet the building code.
So I guess they didn't build the basement as deep, so it's, it's, it's actually more like a, a cellar than it is a basement. So, so to get the clearance to clear to, uh, uh, the basement, they would need to go up those, uh, stairs. The other homes on the street probably it's a full basement, uh, which is, uh, the difference being that, uh, a hundred percent of the, of, of the, uh, room area is underground, uh, versus, or only partially underground.
Okay, and you talked about a wire chain link fence or something before? Um, why do you even have to put a fence up? If we can't do a really nice fence, why don't we just leave it without a fence?
I believe the, the, we suggested on the board we'd have a, a condition that it be, it not be a chain link and that it be wrought iron or black aluminum.
Yeah, I, I mean.
And, and they, and they, and that was, that was agreed to as a condition. The applicant was fine with, with changing the fence.
Okay, yeah, I would think you would save a little bit of money. Leave the fence out, just put nice.
But you only can put four feet in the front anyway. So it's gonna be a chain link, I mean, a, a rock, rotten fence. It, you know, it's gonna be a short fence anyway.
Okay. Okay, and you talked about blue stone before for the, for the sidewalk?
No, we, we said blue stone curb, but we had agreed that we're gonna do the granite curb. Which is much better than the blue stone.
Right, so right now you currently have, um, a, a blue stone, uh, uh, side. Uh, and those obviously, they, they seem very well and, uh, of course they're very expensive. So right now, the applicant has agreed to go with a granite curving, which is very durable, is very appealing. The, uh, concrete, uh, build on the sidewalk according to the, uh, construction codes.
Okay, my last question, cause I have three, um, percent left on my phone. My last question is, uh, when are you guys gonna start this? We've been doing this for a minute now.
You know, we had the COVID, we had delays. We could, we didn't, I mean, we're doing it for a minute, but we, we weren't, this is the first time we are presenting.
Okay, cause yeah, a, a lot's been going on. We, we need to make sure that, 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 that place get cut properly, not, 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 um, sprayed, but cut, that the grass be cut and just maintained, cause it just brings the rest of the neighborhood down. But I'm looking forward to the new houses.
Uh, Mr. McIntosh, you have, does your client have a plan to maintain the property until construction starts?
He's right here. Yes, we do that too. And, but with, with the, you know, we, we do that.
Uh, uh, the, the neighbor doesn't agree. They should, they believe that, uh, that the, the, the grass is growing really tall and it's, uh, it's making the neighborhood look bad. So could you please, uh, you know, attend to that, uh, more frequently, I should say, until your buildup begins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I'm done now. Thank you.
Very much. Have a great evening. Thank you for coming out to speak.
Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you, thank you. Deputy Commissioner Melina, is there, uh, anyone else?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel? Anything else?
Can go into secret and just noting that the board recognizes that this is on for a subdivision review, not site plan review, but since this is a one-to-two-family home, this project will not be coming back to the planning board, so we thank the applicant for taking the time to show elevations and answer these questions and the public as well. We can go through secret.
Okay, one, one moment, um, counsel. Deputy Commissioner Melina, can you please, uh, uh, remove the participants unless they are on the board or counsel? Or the applicant? Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, counsel, please continue.
Since this is a subdivision plan, the planning board is the only reviewing agency. So if you'd like to take a vote, Mr. Chair, to declare the planning board as lead agency?
Yes, like, make, make a motion that the planning board be the lead agency. Um, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that was unanimous.
The applicant submitted a short environmental assessment form, so we'll go through the part two for the short environmental assessment form. Again, eleven questions. The board is answering. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
Two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
Uh, repeat please.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's vacant land right now.
And e, and even if, uh, from the prior use, uh, it does, it increased the intensity. I, I went from a, uh, one structure, two families, to now two structures, four families.
It was not, it was not a two-family, it was a, it was a.
It was a three-family, right?
It was three, okay, well, still intensity is increased.
Right.
Three family to four?
Correct.
Three family to, 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 to four units, two, two families.
Okay. Number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
Well, I would say this is, uh, designs, uh, yes. Uh, and that's, that's.
I'm sorry, and I, the options are no to small impact or moderate to large impact?
Moderate to large.
Okay.
I, I, I don't think that's, that's good.
Well, that's my opinion.
Moderate to large impact. You're talking about impact on the, on the, on the neighborhood. You have existing sewers, existing water, existing, that's not.
McIntosh, uh, counsel, can you read the question over?
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community neighborhood?
Mr. McIntosh, quality and character. We're not talking about, uh, municipal, uh, uh.
Not talking infrastructure issues.
Sure, exactly. So I stand to moderate to significant.
Number four, the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No. No. No.
Five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? Will this result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic?
Adverse, no.
So that's no to small. Six. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Does it cause an increase in the use of energy and also fail to incorporate conservation measures?
No.
To small impact. Number seven. Two-part question, will the proposed action impact existing, A, public or private water supplies?
Repeat that, I'm sorry.
Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies?
Yes.
Yes.
Moderate to large or no to small?
A no to small.
Okay. And B, will it affect public or private wastewater treatment facility, utilities?
Yes.
No to small or moderate to large?
No to small.
Number eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? For example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna?
No.
No.
Ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
No.
And finally, finally, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
No.
Okay, so out of eleven, there were two moderate to large impacts regarding change in the intensity or use of the land and community character. And the majority of questions, answers were no to small impact, so would the board like the final determination?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Uh, what was the question eight? What was that question?
Question eight is, will the proposed action impair the quality, the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
Okay, thank you. That's all. I was just wondering.
All right, so we'll move on to the final part, part three. Based on the information and analysis above and any supporting documentation, does the board find that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts? Or may result in one or more potentially large or significant adverse impact?
I don't believe any.
No.
Okay, so you can put it to a vote that the action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact?
Right, I'll make a motion that, that, uh, it's not going to have a, a larger adverse, uh, impact.
I second that.
Okay, we've got a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposing? Okay, motion carries.
Please, the secret process, if the board would like to take action on the subdivision application.
Go ahead, Les.
Uh, regarding, uh, a motion?
Yep.
Uh, I'd motion that, uh, we approve this application based on the conditions that the council will, uh, uh, will, uh, read out to us right now that we've collected, uh, throughout the, uh, this process.
Okay, counsel, can you please read what you have?
Yes. I've noted eight conditions. One, applicant shall replace a hundred percent of the sidewalks that front the property on Summit and East Sydney Avenue. Materials shall be concrete sidewalks with granite curb. Materials shall be concrete sidewalks with granite curbs.
Correct.
Two, all fencing installed shall be wrought iron or black aluminum.
Correct.
Correct.
Three, applicant shall plant two street trees on Summit Avenue and two street trees on East Sydney.
Correct.
Right, and and by the way, those be at planting. At at planting, I believe, Frank, you could, you could correct me if I'm wrong on this, but planting, we believe that we require that the tree be of eight feet tall and a three inch caliber at breast height.
Yeah, I would say between two and three inch caliper. I would say the two to three inch caliper.
Between two to three inch caliper at breast height and a minimum of eight feet in height.
Yeah, you could do that and also even a, if you want like a warranty on it, you know, in case it dies, they replace it within a within a year.
Yeah.
You could do that also.
Got your line, counsel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Supposed future should be two, all planting shall be two to three cali, two to three inch caliper. At height, minimum of eight feet in height. Shall be in good and growing condition, any diseased or dead trees shall be by the next growing season.
Fair enough.
Number four, all exterior lighting shall be non directional and downward facing, not forward or upward facing.
Correct.
Five, it should be a three foot buffer between the driveway and property line.
Correct.
Six, both residences shall have a single exterior door that opens into a vestibule that leads to the two interior units.
Correct.
Seven, the basement shall not be used as an independent third unit.
Correct.
And eight, the owner shall cut the grass and maintain the yard until construction begins.
Correct.
Can we put a timeframe on the the cutting of the grass? Because saying that you can cut it, you know, that can take, he can take a month and the grass can grow. Because I've 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 seen how to, how high the grass gets over there, is that, is that, we can put that into writing every two weeks or so, is that?
How about we just say weekly?
Weekly, I agree. Or every two weeks a minimum.
I say weekly.
All right, so weekly consensus on week, yeah, maintenance of the lawn in terms of cutting and litter removal until the construction of the property.
Weekly maintenance.
Weekly maintenance. I think weekly, weekly maintenance in including cutting of grass. So any any debris or anything of that nature that's possibly thrown or dumped on the property.
I agree.
Basically be a good nature on some of you guys.
Okay, so we have, we have the motion, do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That was a a second by Commissioner Thompson.
Okay, all right, great. All right, thank you very much, Doris, good luck with your project.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh.
Sorry, it was moved by Commissioner Zemore, seconded by.
By Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have proposed amendments to Planning Board Rules of Procedure, which is three point three. In accordance with Mount Vernon City Code, what is that fifty five dash three B rules and regulations, the planning board may adopt such rules and regulations as it deems necessary and proper to the performance of its powers and duties hereunder and may amend or repeal the same. So what we'd like to do is change the timetable from twenty one days to twenty eight days, is that accurate, counsel?
That is correct. Submission that applicant shall submit their materials to the planning board twenty eight days prior to the board's regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, great. We have a motion to amend the Planning Board Rules and Regulations to from twenty one to twenty eight days, meaning that prior to the app, to our meeting, that all materials have to be submitted.
I make the motion to amend the rules from twenty one to twenty eight days.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so Commissioner White made a motion, Commissioner Jenga made a second, seconded the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries. All right.
I believe that completes our business.
Okay, counsel, Deputy Melina, is there anything further?
Nothing here.
Okay. I'd like to thank everybody very much for their for their time in our our first meeting without Mr. Long. And thank you, counsel, you did an excellent job, thank you Deputy Commissioner Melina, did a very good job. And commissioners, thank you for your time. Motion to adjourn. Have a second?
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned.
Good night.
That was my gavel, all right.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you.
Guys, thank you.